Okay. Good evening, and on behalf of the City of Independence, I welcome each one of you in attendance as well as those who are watching the meeting on City 7 to this planning commission. For those of you who are unfamiliar with our meetings, it is the responsibility of this commission to hold public hearings and make recommendations to the Independent City Council on matters relating to zoning and land use changes within the city. We also consider and make decisions on Platts, special use permits, and other issues, as well as changes in codes and policies that relate to city planning. First, our procedure is we will hear each case, then we will open it up for the applicant and for those who wish to speak for the case and those who wish to speak against the case. Because this is the only public hearing on these cases, we ask that when you come up, you state your name and your address, that you stay on point, and talk about just what the case is about. If you agree with the previous person, then just simply state your agreement to save time. So, if there are any of you who would wish to speak tonight, or think you might want to speak, you can always change your mind, but please stand and let me swear you in. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do. Thank you. Our first case, or first thing is consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Nesbit, second.
I second.
Commissioner Ferguson. And we're ready for a vote, which will also be our roll call. I'm going to be efficient.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean.
Yes. The consent agenda is passed. All right, our first case is case number 23-400-01, short-term rental at 217 South Hunter Street. Staff, can you give us a report, please?
Yes, this is an application by Rob Scarborough for a short-term rental request at 217 South Hunter Street. As you can see from the vicinity map there, it is east of Nolan Road, on the north side of Walnut, a couple of houses in on the east side of Hunter. This is an aerial photograph of the site. Their house is in a black rectangle there. Walnut is directly on the south, and there you can see the single-family houses around the site. The only thing that's different in this neighborhood is there is a nursing home long-term care facility to the west of this, of this street there. This shows, this is a short-term rental map. It shows the locations of the short-term rentals in the little blue circles with the S in it. As you can see where the applicant is noted there, it is, there's really no short-term rentals in this area, so there's no issues with rentals on the same side of the street or within 500 feet. It's not an issue here. Okay, excuse me, in the spring of 2022, their investment company is called Hard Scar. I think the Scar is for Scarborough. Purchases property in Central Independence to start a short-term rental. It will be managed by Hard Scar's subsidiary company called Just Like Home Vacation Rental. The company already manages two other sites in Independence and 17 in the metro area. The property contains a 1,120-square-foot house with three bedrooms for an occupancy of six people. On the main floor, along with the bedrooms, is the kitchen, bathroom, and living room. The third floor, or the second floor, is the third bedroom. It's light brown color with dark brown trim. It has a double-wide driveway on the south side of the lot that extends from the street along the house, on the south side of the house, and can provide parking for at least four cars. The surrounding single-family neighborhood is dominated by small homes located on streets without curbs, gutters, or sidewalks. Most of the homes are post-World War II ranches on smaller shaded lots. Okay, this is the applicant's house. As you can see, it is, it's kind hard to see here, but it is kind of a light brown color with the dark brown trim. This is another photograph that shows the house, and then this, the applicant's driveway that goes all the way into the lot, the depth of the house. This is the floor plan for the house. You can see there's two bedrooms on this lower floor, along with the kitchen, the living room, and the bathroom, and then there are a little small hallway there. And then this is the, shows the stairway that goes up to the second floor of the house with just a larger third bedroom. You can see the, sort of the bedroom area up there on this, on this plan, where it is. This is the house immediately south of the site. You can see the applicant's driveway on the left side of the screen there. Walnut is to the right. You can see a little bit of it on the right side of the screen. This is the house to the southwest of the applicant's site. It's on the west side of Hunter. This is another house on the west side of Hunter, and a third house on the west side of Hunter. Here, we're looking south down Hunter toward Walnut. You can see how all the houses sit back. And this is the house that's immediately north of the site. Okay, for the short-term rental requirements, the applicant has provided the materials that's requested in the new application materials. They plan on introducing the minute noise monitoring system. They have a trash pickup by Ted's Trash every Tuesday. They are listing the property only on the Airbnb site. Just Like Home Vacation Rentals, which is based in Smithville, will be responsible for most of the business operations, including site security screening, customers, and coordinating bookings. The short-term, the city's short-term rental checklist has been completed and returned, and covers licensing, future inspections, insurance, posting information, and so forth. A fire evacuation plan has been provided along with the floor plans of the house. The plans must also be posted per code requirement. And then the site recently passed the city department's, fire department's initial short-term rental safety inspections without any conditions or, conditions or exceptions. Staff does recommend approval of the short-term rental with the following conditions. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with city code and comply with Article 3, Chapter 5 of the city code. The occupational license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. The maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to six. And then the noise monitoring system shall be installed and activated. The Good Neighbor Guidelines, evacuation plans, and other notices must be properly posted prior to the approval of a business license. I can go through those pictures or anything if you'd like. Again?
Back up there to the driveway, was it gravel or paved?
Oh, it's, it's a paved driveway.
It's paved? I thought it looked like gravel, but...
It's, it's old asphalt, but it is asphalt.
Okay. It looks like gravel.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, any other questions of staff before we bring the applicant forward? I'm assuming you were done.
Excuse me?
I'm assuming you were done with your report.
Yes.
All right. Will the applicant please come forward? If you'll state your full name and address for us, please.
My name is Rob Scarborough.
It's a tall person problem that I don't have, but...
My name is Rob Scarborough, 6003 Quincy Boulevard in Smithville, Missouri. I am the applicant, and this is, this will be my third short-term rental in Independence. The first one on Overton is now three years old, and I'm happy to say that we've been using the minute noise monitoring hardware for the past two years, and it has worked wonderfully. We know of potential issues before our neighbors do, and that's, that's the whole point of them. So, I'm a huge fan of that being in the ordinance now.
Thank you. That's good to hear. Do you want to tell us about this project?
So, this project is a property that we purchased last year. We had probably a month, maybe two months' worth of minor repairs that took six months, and then it normally takes us about 30 to 45 days to furnish a home, which took us about three months. So, this project is a little past due, but it's ready to go now, and, and we're happy to hopefully begin hosting soon.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes. Tell me, how did you come about coming up to speed in understanding the municipal rules and regulations pertaining to short-term rental?
Mr. Borders has been very good in sending me updates as they come about, and then it's just a matter of reading the ordinances, a lot of, especially the new ordinance, we were already doing. So, it's just making sure that we had those few items that we didn't in place. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay.
Tell me, what more can we do in terms of making the rules even more clear, so that anyone and everyone can understand them?
Are there rules that aren't clear? I haven't found them to be so...
You mean you find the rules to be understandable?
I, I do.
And clear?
I do.
Comprehensible?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm going to follow up with that. When were you before us first?
The first one was the property off of Lee Summit Road.
And what year was that?
April-ish of last year.
Okay. So, before the new, the new ordinance came in, you were, you were cleared then, too?
Correct.
Okay. Because you called, looked online, which did you do?
Looked online.
Thanks.
There were lessons learned from that first case.
Those are good questions, though. That's very helpful, and to hear from somebody who's experiencing it.
What was the principal lesson learned?
Do not operate without a license, and then try to get a license.
Yeah, good, very good advice.
Any other good counsel, what you would offer?
I would say get to know your neighbors early in the whole process. If you're even thinking about doing this, get to know the neighbors. In my experience, it helps because I've been doing this for a few years, not just in Independence, but in Kansas City and Smithville. So, I've seen a few things and know how to avoid issues with guests that then cause issues with neighbors. But the big thing is just get to know your neighbors.
Communicate.
Make sure they have...
You mean communicate?
Make sure they have my contact information, because if something is going on that shouldn't be, I want them calling me, not the city, and adding burden to an already busy staff.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes. I just have one clarification question. Said that your driveway, and it looks very nice, can hold four cars, but only six can sleep in the house?
Correct.
Okay. How many beds?
Three beds.
Okay.
Three queen-size beds.
Okay.
We tend to, in a home with only one bathroom, we generally don't try to host more than six anyway, because it lessens the guest experience in our experience.
Anybody have any more questions? I guess one more question. Is this in walking distance to the square?
Maybe for some, not for me. I would probably drive to the square.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. The public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, any discussion? More questions for the staff? Or I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This appears to be a clean case. Staff has given a recommendation for approval. The applicant has been responsive, therefore, barring any other commissioners, I will move for passage of case number 23-400-01, short-term rental at 217 South Hunter. That is presented with the stipulations as cited by staff.
I second. Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Chair McLean?
Yes. Case number 23-400-01, short-term rental at 217 South Hunter Street, has been passed, has been approved either way. Thank you, and good luck. Next case, number 23-400-02, short-term rental, 1430 South Maywood Avenue. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Yeah, this case, 23-400-02, here at, at 1430 South Maywood, may be familiar to you, déjà vu. This is the case we had before, and it went, it was appealed onto council, and then they, they, they pulled it at about the time the new ordinance was being looked at, and now you're seeing this again. Okay? So, again, you can see the vicinity map here. It's relation to Hardy and Winter Road. Aerial photograph showing a corner lot there. They're in Maywood and East 15th Street. And this is looking at the driveway off of 15th. And here's the parking plant. So, there's the pull-off area there that would need to be paved, if you remember that. There'll be a picture in a moment showing that. And then the evacuation plan for the proposed floor plan. Just a little reminder that this building is a duplex. So, what they were doing was they have a long-term rental in one part of the structure, and then a, a short-term rental in the other part of the structure. And again, here's the site plan showing the intersection. And this, these are the nearest, nearby short-term rentals there in the Inglewood area, Proctor So, the history of this has been, it's currently zoned R12 for two-family residential for duplexes. Was, of course, in the previous code, that was R12. Now, it's R2. Or, I'm sorry, got that backward. The previous code was R2. It's R12 now. As far as the conditions of the property in the area, the Maywood Short-Term Rental, which would be located at 1430 South Maywood Avenue, was constructed in the 1960s, the structure. This will be the second property applied for by the applicant. Stone House, located at 1734 South Northern Boulevard in the Inglewoods Art District, was approved approximately a year ago. Actually, it's more than a year. It has received five-star reviews. The 1,961-square-foot blond brick house is a duplex. The main house area would be the short-term rental unit. The upstairs apartment, 1430 and a half, is already occupied as a long-term rental The 1960s grandma house-themed short-term rental will have a minimum of two-night stays. There are three bedrooms to provide occupancy for seven guests. The surrounding, mostly single-family neighborhood, is dominated by small homes on small lots with rights of way without curbs, gutters, or sidewalks. Most of the area houses are pre-World War II bungalows with porches on tree-shaded lots. As far as the parking situation, as I showed earlier on the drawing, the property has a two-car wide driveway with one lane leading into a garage and the other under the deck carport. Six cars can park on the site, and two can pull off on the pull-off area up there along Maywood Avenue as well. Unreal-ly guest security. The applicants will screen all guests ahead of time and let neighbors know how to reach managers if there ever is a problem. The applicant regularly drives by the property. Further, a cleaner will come right after the guests leave. Anything damaged will be charged to the security deposit, and the guests will receive a bad review on Airbnb. So, as far as meeting the general short-term rental requirements, noise monitoring, the applicant must install a noise monitoring system, which will notify the applicant if the decibel level is above 85 dB for more than five continuous minutes. Trash removal, trash pickup is scheduled for a weekly pickup via the Ted's Trash Service. Property listing, the property will be listed on the Airbnb site. Business operations and security, Kansas City Property Solutions will be responsible for most of the business operations, including site security, screen customers, and coordinating The city's short-term rental checklist, a form was completed by the applicant, covering licensing, future inspections, insurance, and onsite information posting. As far as fire and safety, I showed you the evacuation plan, slash floor plan, a few minutes ago. The fire escape plan will have to be posted as well. As far as city inspection, the fire inspector has been out to inspect the property, and it's passed the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspection required. As the map showed earlier, there are no other short-term rentals in the area, and so that's not an issue. So, here we are looking at the front of the house. Again, this is on Maywood, looking directly at it, looking west, and of course, that's that pull-off area there that would have to be paved. And then this is looking north, just east of the property, so we're looking up Maywood. And then this is looking south at the intersection with 15th Street. And of course, this is looking west on 15th Street, by their driveway, right there where the trash can is. And then this is looking back into the property from the south, looking north. And then just better look at the back deck and backyard here, and back up the street toward Maywood. Staff recommends approval of this short-term rental with the following conditions. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article 3, Chapter 5 of the city code. The occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. Second one, the business shall comply with all safety and other standards established by Section 14, 420 of the city code. Number three, the maximum occupancy for the premises shall be limited to just six adults. Four, a noise monitoring system shall be installed and activated, and the Good Neighbor Guidelines, evacuation plan, and other notices will be properly posted prior to approval of the business license. And number five, pave the Maywood pull-off area.
Thank you. Will the applicant come forward, please?
Madam Chair, one question here for staff. On the noise monitoring systems, when they apply for business license each year, is that checked, or is that, to make sure, still in use? I mean, I didn't know, I didn't know if we're going to follow up on that, that way make sure.
I guess we could put a request, if they do a rental-ready inspection every year, I guess that we could add that to the list. I don't think it's on the list now, and this is, this noise monitoring's only come up, so it hasn't really...
Right, but I'll, I'd like to get that added. That way, we make sure it's staying active on all these units when it comes up.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Before the applicant speaks, Madam Chair, you mentioned a five-star rating on a prior property. Who gave a five-star rating?
You'll have to ask the applicant, I'm not...
No, you said it.
That was what they indicated on their narrative that they provided to us.
She's right there, you can ask her.
Madam Chair, the applicant is April Preston. My name happens to be Preston.
So, we want to make clear...
We want to make clear that it would be an enhancement to my image if I were related to her.
Thank you.
However, I do not think we are related, although I would joyfully claim that I'm related.
Got it. Okay.
I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will you please state your name and your address, please?
April Preston, 10920 East Winter Road in Inglewood.
Thank you. I guess kind of remind us of anything that we need to be reminded of, and talk about the changes and what's, what you've done.
Yes. I just had one correction to the slideshow. Thank you, Brian, you're doing awesome. It is six occupants only. I don't want seven, just six, and that's what we have listed, so on our, I believe on the application, if I made a mistake, it was mine. And then we do plan to pave the pull-off if it's approved, and then we also order the, I call that a minute, but you're calling it a minute device. Whatever that device is, that measures noise, so it's actually sold through Airbnb, and it connects to your app, which is kind of cool. And then it also connects to your phone, so it will alert. You can add several on there. So, we've explored that. It's on the way. It's two weeks out for shipping, and so we obviously would not open until it was installed. I think that was all I had to add. And I did send you the receipt, so you have it. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Question, because it's open. Brian referenced a five-star rating. Who gives a five-star rating, and what is their credibility?
Good question. So, my first applicant for a short-term rental was during COVID. We actually had it via Zoom, and the neighborhood turned out. So, it was at 1734 South Northern. It's actually the other blue dot on the screen, on my own little comp on there. It's the only other one close to Inglewood. And we have now been live for two years there, and I got a super-host status on Airbnb from that rental property, which I, we have, I believe, we're at 198 reviews so far, and we have a total of a five-star rating on that house. So, we're very happy with it. All of the neighbors are completely on our side with it. They all have my number, and they've never had to... They all have my number and they've never had to call me. They just see me in the street or they see me in Inglewood and they say, oh, we just love that little house. Half of them have actually used it for their own guests. They've called me and I've given them the Inglewood discount, which anyone here is welcome to have, to stay nightly there. So, and it's the same way, two-night minimum, but it's only a two-bedroom, so it's just a four-guest property. So we've had very awesome guests there and we're very pleased with it, so.
So on this one, you're doing a two-night rental.
Two-night minimum, yeah. And most honestly, our average has been a week or more on Stone House, what we call Stone House. So we found that to kind of be the average, but we actually, this past winter, we actually had a five-month stay. So we had a couple who, their house burned and the insurance company was unable to find something that would take their pets. And so we accepted them to come in and the insurance company paid directly, us directly, to stay there with their two dogs. So we had it rented for five months to one couple.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have two questions.
Yeah, if I, if I could interject something in here, I forgot to mention this. We did receive a legal protest, again, like we did before. And it meets the threshold, so it's a legal protest. So again, your vote tonight would be a recommendation to the council rather than a final judgment.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I have two questions.
Yeah.
Were you able to meet or talk to any of these neighbors since the time that we, that you were here last?
I was. So we had an open house, we invited everyone. I believe most of them came and I personally met with them. And then John Perkins has been working really hard with me over there, trying to help any of the neighbors that had questions or concerns and ask, you know, to personally meet with them. And also offered that I personally meet with anybody, which is still completely on the table for any questions or just concerns or even suggestions, we'd be very open to. But yes, we did two mailings and an open house.
Great. And then can you remind us where the other resident parks again? I know we talked about this last time and I can't remember.
That's okay.
Where they park.
Yeah, so he actually drives a big van and he pulls onto the side on the left of the driveway. And so that leaves the, the part that would go toward the garage open. And then of course, the pull-off. We've never had more than one guest at a time because right now we're using our normal rental license and just renting it. We can only rent it a month or more. And so every, for right now, we've only had one guest, you know, that would stay. And we found that at Stone House too, really. The most cars we've ever had there is two. So, yeah, but he parks on the left. Yep.
We know that you're a real estate professional, we know that you're a marketing specialist. But permit me to be redundant in a question. How did you find out how to comply with the municipal codes? And explain the clarity and our need to improve them, if so?
Well, I was kind of in a fun spot. So I was right at the end of the first set and when I applied and because of the protest and it getting sent to city council, it actually got hit in the moratorium, which was completely fine. And we decided to pull back, wait for the new rules to come out. I had no issue understanding the new rules. I missed one of them and Brian helped me understand it. When he said, what is your noise prevention plan? I said, well, all the neighbors have my cell phone number. That sounds like a noise prevention plan to me, right? It would be bothering the neighbors. And he's like, no, we kind of have a little, anyway, I had to buy the device, put it in, hook it to my phone. So that was one of the rules that I had missed initially and we got that fixed. Everything else was very simple, I had no trouble understanding it at all. I basically just printed it and used it like a little checklist, went through, got the fire department. They actually had us do more this time than they did last time, which was completely fine. They had us add a few things, change out a few breakers and outlets and different things. But yeah, I didn't have any, any trouble understanding. And as long as you keep Brian on staff and he answers our questions, I think you're fine.
Job security.
What can, what can be done to make the codes any clearer?
I didn't have any trouble. Yeah, I think just somebody behind the phone that is like, you're like, what does this mean? And they'll explain and I didn't have any issues.
You didn't have any issues?
None.
Do you have any issues complying with the five stated stipulations by staff?
No, sir.
Including paving the pull-off area?
Might as well.
I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In Brian's report, he said, "Most of the property operations are taken care by you." What operations are not taken care by you? And how are you going to make sure that your neighbors stay happy?
I don't know of any, we do all of it.
Brian, did you know what was missing from the most?
That was language from their narrative.
So language from April's narrative?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Kansas City Property Solutions is the company I own. We manage rental properties all over the metro and we handle everything in office. So all of our cleaning turns, my front desk girl does all of the bookings in-house. We do everything. I guess maybe the only part that we wouldn't handle would be what Airbnb does, right? So basically, when they book through Airbnb, they do a pre-screening on there and they send us a recommendation, kind of like what you guys are doing where, you know, is this a local person? Do they have bad reviews? Is there something we need to look at this, you know? The reason I point out local is because most people that rent Airbnbs are not local. And if you do have a local looking, then you want to ask more questions, like why are you looking in your same neighborhood to rent? Because typically, you know, as he probably knows, that usually means party. And so you want to not, you know, we typically don't rent to rental. If we do, it's because I know them, you know, or because I've talked to them and I know what they're doing and they have family coming in town, et cetera.
All right, I did have another question and probably an add-on to it. This is a unique situation because you have a full-time renter also in the home. Does that renter have any way to have any access to the short-term rental?
They do not. So their little apartment, this home was originally built that way. And I purchased it actually from the son of the original builder, so he had lived there his whole life. So it was one, a one-family home. And so when his father built the home, they, they used to do that back then, which is a cool idea. It's kind of build on an apartment and have a rental income built in. And so this little apartment is adorable, it's up in the top, it's completely separated from the house and you walk down a separate set of stairs that goes out to the back patio. So the only time they would ever meet is if they were, he was walking out the back patio and they were on the patio at the same time. And in our disclosures online, we always tell them, and then we have a little sign on the door too that says, hey, don't disturb the tenant that lives upstairs. I actually like it because for one, our tenant's awesome and he's going to call us if there's anything. He checks the mail for us, he just, he's very hands-on, he's a good guy. And he kind of helps us, you know, just keep an eye on things. He, he lives there too. And so he wants to make sure his home is protected. And he lived, he lived there, this is his fourth year, his fourth renewal, so.
So he leaves. I, I'm, like I said, that unique situation where you have somebody living in a house where guests are coming. And so what additional, if any, security measures? Do you anticipate any kind of concern there for your short-term renters?
I think we would definitely be very careful if he ever didn't rent there and we re-rented, you know, and screening that tenant and making sure they understood, you know, there's kind of a two-way thing here that you need to help us watch the property, but as well be, you know, respective of the guests. But all the locks are exterior locks and exterior doors and they all have separate keys and things. So I don't currently have any security concerns, no. We do have an ADT alarm system already there too.
I was only thinking about those common areas, even if it was brief. If there needed to be some kind of video or, or something.
Yeah, since it's outside, there's no interior areas, but there's the outside patio that they could, because his stairs come off the patio to go down to his little area in the driveway.
Do we have a picture of the back? I don't remember there being one, but.
Yeah, that kind of shows. So do you see that white set of steps coming down? That's what the tenant would use, because he comes down the, from the second story and then comes down those steps to go to the little driveway area, if you can see it from there.
Madam Chair, do you guys use any type of camera systems for knowing who comes and goes through the front?
No, we do not. We had a nurse that asked to stay there for three months, which would have been in our normal booking. And she actually brings a little Ring camera that she pops on the door with her, which I thought was a great idea. And it hooks to her phone directly, you know, so she can see if she's home and whatever. So we're very open to that, but I do also like to respect the privacy of the guests. I'm already spying on them with noise level, so.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? If you'll state your name and your address, please.
My name is Lee Phillips. I live at fourteen twenty-three South Maywood Avenue. My husband and I have been an active part of the community in Independence for over thirty years and proud homeowners for nine years now. Madam Chair and distinguished members of this commission, I rise tonight along with my affected neighbors in opposition to the approval of case number twenty-three dash four zero zero dash zero two, a short-term rental Airbnb or mini hotel use application for the property located at fourteen thirty South Maywood Avenue. Tonight, we are asking for your no vote. Esteemed members, it is a fact that our neighborhood did not ask for, nor were we consulted about, the corporate business, excuse me, the corporate purchase of a residentially zoned home for use as a mini hotel, resulting in the surrounding neighborhood dealing with a rotating door of one-hundred percent transient business, not to mention the innumerable variables of concern. It is a fact that the affected neighbors have already been injured by these application processes over the last year. It is a fact that the affected homeowners have opposed this approval since day one. And it is a fact that this is our second valid and legal protest against the approval of the short-term rental Airbnb or mini hotel application for the same property. In two thousand and twenty-two, during the first application, we learned that this commission had heard most of the basic concerns about Airbnbs or mini hotels from other affected and concerned homeowners throughout the city of Independence. With a few parking requirement changes and maybe a pavement or two, ninety-nine point eight percent of the applications were approved. The point oh-two percent that was not approved because of the affected homeowners' first valid and legal protest, eventually resulting in its withdrawal, the application for fourteen thirty South Maywood Avenue. Madam Chair, we ingloriously oppose this approval. We view an approval to be in direct conflict with the state of Missouri zoning use laws and definitions found in Chapter sixty-four and in Chapter eighty-nine of the state Missouri revised statutes. A commercial Airbnb or mini hotel approval is not in line with the state's requirement to consider the existing use and character of our residentially zoned district. An approval would force our residential neighborhood to allow a one-hundred percent transient and one-hundred percent commercial business, a mini hotel, against our valid and legal protested, excuse me, protests and would continually, continually and irrevocably injure the affected. Ultimately, it would destroy our neighborhood. In the city of Independence housing study, it states that discretion should be used regarding approvals of short-term rentals. And the state of Missouri limits residential zoning use to single-family homes or long-term family rentals. These types of one-hundred percent transient businesses, Airbnbs or mini hotels in residential areas should not be the rule, but the exception. Again, we courteously ask for your no vote tonight. Ladies and gentlemen of this commission, considering that the supply chain is still backed up and we can't build houses because of lack of materials, if we continue to give away our precious and limited inventory of homes to out-of-town investors for a short-term rental Airbnb or mini hotel businesses, we will not have a community left to support the business community tagline on, found on the city's literature. It's great to add businesses to the city, but how can an out-of-town business be more important in a residential area than the citizen homeowners who are affected, especially if they have a valid and legal protest, twice? The corporate applicant can take their business elsewhere where they might be more well-received. But we cannot just move at the drop of a hat. We do not want this. We purchased homes in a residential area to live as a residential area. We understand how an applicant might be passionate about their business, but as, we as homeowners are just as passionate, if not more, because we live there every day. In conclusion, there is no upside for the affected homeowners or the neighborhood as a whole. We have already been negatively impacted and injured by the first application in two thousand and twenty-two. An approval will only further injure the affected homeowners. We humbly ask for your no vote on this application. We are hopeful that this honorable and distinguished commission will listen to their citizen homeowners' protest and uphold and enforce both the state of Missouri and the city of Independence zoning laws and ordinances. Please vote no on the approval of this application. I thank you for your valuable time and we await your thoughtful decision.
Thank you. Is it? We'll bring her back up in a minute. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this? And again, please state, not again, but please state your name and your address.
My name is Cynthia Green. I live at one five zero eight South Maywood Avenue here in Independence, Inglewood. And I love my neighborhood. I love the idea of having a community of a neighborhood. And to have business come in unwelcome, uninvited, unsolicited is uncourageable to me. I support my neighbors, I know my neighbors' needs. I have one that had just passed away. I comfort him and I helped him. I have another neighbor who turns ninety years old tomorrow. And this is something she does not want. If she could be here, she would be here speaking. She's very particular about her home and who is around her. This Airbnb that's so-called turns into a short-term rental, one and the same, don't change, know nothing. The city of Independence is missing an opportunity here. When you allow these people to come in to these neighborhoods, they must make it look like a business. New driveways, new sidewalks, new plumbing, new electricity, update it. Make it something valuable, other than just whitewashing it and saying it's new. It is not. It brings nothing to my neighborhood, nothing to make my neighborhood look better and wanted, but taking money. This upsets me greatly, let alone this house is across the street from my child's bus stop. Elementary, preschool, junior high, and high school. Desirable ages that can be manipulated and could be induced to come into a home. And nobody's seeing things, nobody watching, other than the neighbors. No video to show anything, people coming in and going. Don't ask to video insights of their home, but on the outside, yes. And the noise control, are we supposed to be responsible for? When they're out of town themselves, to let them know how noisy the renters are being or their intended guests are being? We're not their babysitters, they're not a part of us. I will watch out for my neighbors, who watch out for me. But I am not going to watch out for a business that is going to take from me and give me nothing in return. I feel strongly what Lee Phillips has said and I support it a hundred percent. And so does every neighbor that is protesting against this, let alone the ones that did not have time to get the paperwork together and get it done, to have certified. Or we would have had even more. So in order to give people time, we need a little more time. And then instead of just being submitted a notice and giving you a timeframe that is too short. People want to be involved, but they are busy. Everybody has a busy life and/or you would have more people sitting in here. What's going on here in the city of Independence is something that needs to be taken very cautiously, because it's going to cost us a lot. Not just as a community, but as a state. It's already a problem in many states. All you have to do is go online and listen to their complaints, because it's happening here now. Thank you very much.
Oh, I forgot to turn my mic on, sorry, City 7. Go ahead. Go ahead.
April, I had a follow-up. You mentioned a long-term rental from your current license, right? If for some reason, short-term rental is not approved, would you continue seeking long-term rentals for this property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
Speak, you listened to two people who were deliberate, thoughtful, and concerned. Speak to them as well as this commission.
Well, the first thing I want to say is I'm not from out of town. So I own property in Independence. I grew up in Independence. My dad worked at Turner Music on the square for 27 years. I rode my bike to the 5 and 10. I unfortunately didn't get to watch movies at the movie theater in Inglewood. I was a little too late for that. I'm on the EBA as the treasurer. I'm on the SID board of Inglewood as the treasurer. I recently just participated in a cleanup day of Inglewood. I'm here every single day. Literally, I'm here 60 hours a week, if not more. I live in the country outside of town. I'm not from out of town. The other person that owns, so the owner of this is called Royal Oaks Investment Group. Royal Oaks came from the first apartment complex that we ever bought together, which is on Appleton and 19th Street, right behind the now big gray Inglewood Arts Building. We purchased that in 2018. So that's where we got the name for Royal Oaks Investment Group. We put together a little group of locals, where none of us are from out of town, and we put together our own money. We worked and got loans. We did what we could. This was our very first project. So we came from there, and when we bought Stonehouse, the same Royal Oaks Investment Group owns it. I can give you the names, phonemes, and addresses for everyone in Royal Oaks Investment Group. They are all local. No one is from out of town. Jeff and I are the main managers of the group, and Jeff lives in Prairie Village, Kansas. He's at my office two days a week, and I'm here all the time. He's the money guy, and I do the operations. And we've known each other for 17 years. So we're very local. We're very invested in the City of Independence. I love Independence. I will not hurt neighbors. I'm not trying to run a business that's going to hurt neighbors by any means. When you have a short-term rental property, it brings people to Independence to experience it that may never come here. And that's what we've experienced with Stonehouse so far, and even Maywood with the month-to-month. Right now, we currently have a family staying there. This is their second time they've come. They've stayed there three months last time, and they're staying there three months this time, and they're from Salt Lake City, Utah, and they're working on a job here locally. And they're the sweetest couple. They have two little kids. And they called me, you know, because they wanted to do Thanksgiving dinner when they stayed, and they were like, we need more casserole dishes, you know? So we brought them some. So everyone that we've had experience with has been an asset to Independence. We've got the Airbnb full of, at a Stonehouse, you know, where to go locally, and they walk down to Franny Frank's Coffee Cakes in Inglewood. I manage Franny Frank's. I manage that whole strip in Inglewood. I work my butt off to find the best tenants for Inglewood. And Franny Frank's, the coffee cake, she's having National Coffee Cake Day. She's going to be on the news, and she's amazing. And I put her little cards and little coupons, and she, like, will make me wrapped-up bowed coffee cakes to leave the guests as presents. And all of that is just helping. We've got local people helping local businesses. They're coming up to the square. They're coming to Inglewood. They're supporting what we have here, and they're finding out about it. I had a lady that stayed at Stonehouse that did a huge project for the Truman Library. You know, we're proud of that. We're very happy to have them. So I'm not trying to be an out-of-town investor. I work for those people. I'm not one of those people. And that probably is the biggest thing. They have my number. They can absolutely call me. I'm not a state away. I'm usually five minutes away, and I will run over there, and I will fix any situation that is going on.
Can you, what are some of the reviews you've gotten on your other?
On Stonehouse?
Yeah.
Probably one of the best ones is the continual response of, we had no idea this area exists. So even if there, say, the other, I had a guy come from Alabama up here, and his daughter lives in Overland Park, and so he found a little house where he could stay, and his daughter could come and visit, or they could hang out and kind of do something, and he left just an amazing review. He's like, I had no idea this little area exists. It's so great. We ate at Fivelore. You know, we went and got coffee cake. We did all these things. And I know they even came up to the square and got ice cream, and just, they were like, what a cute little place. We spent our whole week here. We never left the area. The other thing is for all the different games and things at the stadiums, we get a lot of people to come and stay for that, and they always say very nice things about our area. Just a really quiet, hideaway neighborhood, you know, where things are not quite as crazy if you were to stay downtown or something. So.
Thank you. I had another question, but it popped right out. Anyone else have another question?
I have a question for the staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you, so if we recommend this, we know it has to go to the council for approval, but if we recommend this, and down the road, there's a problem with any short-term rental, but let's say, because there's concerns with where this one's located, what is currently on the books as a recourse?
In the meantime, Counselor, is it possible, I'm just curious, is there a definition for mini hotel?
I can look that up real quick.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can we look at the protest papers?
So what I have here is the short-term rental revocation issues or ways to deal with a revocation. The short-term rental operator has been cited for at least two or more offenses in a three-month period. That's one of the triggers. Number two, a short-term rental operator submits an application or other document as part of the short-term rental review process that contains or represents fraud, or misrepresents, or provides false information. Number three, the short-term rental operator has violated or is currently violating this chapter that significantly endangers the public health, safety, or welfare. So anything in this chapter. And number four, the short-term rental operator fails to pay the transient guest tax, sales tax, or other property taxes. The way I understand it, it's going to be kind of a automatic software-type thing. So.
An automatic stop on those events?
If those four issues, any of those four that aren't met, then revocation can result from that.
And I also believe that the license is only one year at a time, and so you, when I got Stonehouse, it was provisional, that if anything came up within that year, they had the option to not renew, which is completely fair.
I'm ready.
Chairman McLean, there is no definition under the city code, either in the general ordinances or the zoning ordinances with respect to mini hotel, nor can I find one in general located within the Missouri statutes dealing with zoning.
Okay, thank you. I just, I'd never heard the term before.
Hey, Brian, on the protest petition.
Yes.
How far is the radius on that?
185 feet, and it's actually the square footage, you know, within that. So, and I think all the properties are actually within the radius. I don't think, well, I think there may be one that has a corner of it that is not, but nearly 100% of all the properties are within the 185-foot radius.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Let's also, I didn't see one on the list here, so. That's why I was curious. Oh, probably. Actually, some of the addresses don't, are not on the list that I see here. That's why I'm trying to figure out what the deal is.
What list are you talking about?
The protest petition list?
Right.
I mean, like, we got address here, 10206 East 15th. I don't see that on my list here that went out, or do I not have a correct list here?
What address, again?
10206 East 15th.
Is that a mailing address possibly?
I, it says property address, so that might not be, that's what I'm saying. It might not be a mailing address. It might be.
You say 10206?
10206 East 15th Street.
Yeah, that's within the 185-feet area.
So.
I'm looking at it right here on the map.
What went out to people's names on our list here that you, in your report. I'm going off the list of the report. That's why I don't know.
You're welcome to sit down while we.
Well, the mailing list won't necessarily have the property lists on, I mean.
That's what I'm saying.
The mailing list is actually the, is the mailing address on the list that was sent out to you, not actually the properties in the 185-feet list.
Okay, okay, back out. So it must be one of those, okay. Must be one of those, okay. Thank you.
Cindy, can I ask this stuff? Can you, you tell me that the protest met the requirement? What is the requirement?
Twenty, you have to exceed 25% of the area within 185 feet of the property, the land area within, the protests, the properties protested have to amount to over 25% of the land area, not of the property owners, but of the actual land area excluding rightways.
Brian, one more thing. Will you go over what that means for us, please? Sorry, just one more time. What the protest means for this?
The protest means for you that you don't, you, this doesn't end at this body, that you're not deciding whether you are voting in favor or vote against. Either way, it has to go to council, and they get to make the decision.
This is, I don't know if this is okay, but I would like to see if the previous applicant could come up and talk about the sound device, and kind of explain it to us again, since he's actually using it, how it works. Is that, okay. Thank you. Mr. Scarborough, if you'll state your name and address again for us, please.
Rob Scarborough, 603 Quincy Boulevard, Smithville, Missouri. It does look like minute, but it's pronounced minute. It is basically the size of a, maybe a thick smoke detector, mounts on the ceiling or on the wall. It monitors decibel levels only. It doesn't record or listen for key words. It is strictly just listening for decibels. You can set up the thresholds at whatever you want. I believe the applicant mentioned 85 decibels for five continuous minutes. It's the same setting that I have on mine, and myself and my team will get notified on our phones that that threshold has been met for five continuous minutes. At that point, we're able to begin our processes to shut down whatever's going on, or at least investigate what's going on. We keep in mind the local noise ordinance, and the device also tracks temperature, humidity. Kind of a side note, but three times this winter, we've been notified of the temperature getting below 60 degrees in the home. We looked at our Nest thermostats that was set at 70, and we were able to identify an HVAC issue prior to a guest showing up. I'm a huge fan of these things. And regarding monitoring whether it's active a year down the road or not, I mean, I can pull up my app and show you all the properties that are active right now, and I think it's 12 bucks a month. It's ridiculously inexpensive for the service that you get for it.
So it's minute? Am I just like minute?
It's pronounced minute with, but when you go to spell it, there's no E. So it's minute, but pronounced minute. And also, NoiseAware is the second major manufacturer that does a similar thing. NoiseAware and Minute.
Anyone have any other questions?
I got Reynolds. I might have found Reynolds.
Do we have anything to talk about, discuss?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have been an incredible advocate, I might even say, for short-term rentals. I find in the appropriate cases, they have been a positive impact on neighborhoods. Where I have not supported short-term rentals, it's where the neighbors take exception, and I've been consistent about that. I honestly believe that this would have a positive impact, but that's irrelevant what I believe. The neighbors have the right to the psychological comfort of what they perceive as appropriate in their neighborhood. It breaks my heart, but I can't support this application, because it would be inconsistent with the protocols I've established in my own mind as to the quiet comfort that every resident is entitled to in their neighborhood. It doesn't matter what I think. It doesn't matter what the applicant thinks. Thinks. Let me do that. My English teacher will fuss at me. It is, the only thing that really matters when it comes to a neighborhood is what the people in that neighborhood finds to be comforting and consistent with what they think. neighborhood finds to be comforting and consistent with what they think brings them peace, the quiet enjoyment of their home, which extends to their neighborhood. Doesn't matter what I feel, doesn't matter what I think will be the impact. The only thing that matters is what the people in that neighborhood thinks. I hope that this applicant will take the high ground and make use of the long-term rental for the sake of the psychological comfort of the people in that neighborhood. I may be wrong in my thinking, but I can't support the application.
Anyone else?
I agree what Preston's saying. I feel that, we don't live there, neighbors live there, so, I mean, I wouldn't like that.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't like it right next to my house, like they're saying, so that's why, that's why I feel also.
Anyone else?
Go ahead, Miss Wapah, H Wiley. You always wait in.
I agree with that. I, I do think back to the last time the applicant was here, and there was, it was a similar situation, and she did a great job and changed their hearts, so I do, I do think about that.
I would be totally uncomfortable saying no to this application if there were no other financial means for this property, but there's a safe fallback position.
Yeah, I think that, so one of the things I keep talking, thinking about too, is some of the comments that were made. And I think, so there's a part of me that also wants to remind people who are going forward, who are going to have short-term rentals put into their neighborhoods. I do want to assure everybody that we are taking these seriously, we are obviously really trying to be thoughtful about them. So far, we've had really good success with them, and maybe it is because we've been picky. We have looked at what other cities have done and have tried to mitigate their mistakes and make them positives. We have the new ordinances, the new U D O, which I think is going to be so helpful, but it is something that this commission has taken seriously because we, we do know the vote, there are two sides. It can help the economy of a city. We are a tourist city that people want to experience, and this is a very cool and intimate way for people to experience this city, who don't want to stay in a noisy downtown hotel, which is, you just, you can't absorb the city that way. So this is a very nuanced thing that I think is, is a good thing, it can be a good thing, in most and some neighborhoods. There's five, I think, on my street, and I can tell you, I have no idea. No, none, no idea. It's very quiet when people come. They're mostly out touring, so I don't even notice them. But I know that there are other cities who have had problems, and I know there are, you know, complaints and things that do happen, but I, I do feel like by and large, we're trying to be very thoughtful about this, so I feel good about that.
Absolutely.
That's my soapbox, and, yes?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If there are no further comments by commissioners in the matter of case number 23-400-02, short-term rental, at 1430 South Maywood Avenue, I move for approval.
Does everyone second?
I second.
Thank you. With conditions?
With his, conditions stipulated by staff and consented to by the applicant.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner Preston?
No.
Commissioner, Commissioner H Wiley?
No.
Commissioner L Wiley?
No.
And Chairman McClain?
No. Case number, oh my gosh, case number 23400-02, short-term rental at 1430 South Maywood has been denied.
And will go to the city.
And will now go to the city council. Case, next case. Yeah, no, no, this is easy. Case number 23-400-04, short-term rental for 1011 South Main Street. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Okay, so this is 23400-04, the Square Pool House Retreat. As you can see from the vicinity map, this is located at the intersection of West Stone and South Main Street, just a little, I guess that's two blocks north of 23rd Street, just to the west of Nolan Road, a block. So, you can see it here in the aerial photograph where the red box is, just to the north of the apartment building that lies to the south right there. So, here's the floor plan, as you can see, bedrooms.
Brian, you've got case number 23400-02 up there. Is that just a typographical error?
Oh, in the corner?
Yeah.
Oh, I do. It's an 04.
It's an 04, okay.
Sorry.
Just making sure I'm not seeing double.
Okay, here is the applicant's parking plan. You can see the long driveway going back to the, on the north side of the house, past the pool, indoor pool house that's on the backside there, to the two-car garage that is there at the back. And then this is that same floor plan we saw a few minutes ago with the evacuation plan. The, the house has five bedrooms, but they will only be able to use four for their purposes, given the limit on the number of guests, as, as we will talk about momentarily. So this is the map of the area with short-term rentals in the vicinity. So the closest ones over there looks like east of Nolan Road, and then one a little farther north, up toward Community Christ. The zoning history of this area, of course, the entire neighborhood is a single-family neighborhood. It was rezoned in the October, right after we approved the U D O the previous summer. So it was, it had been R18 P U D under the new code, previously to the, the U D Os change. It was R4 was that designation for an apartment community. And that whole area along Main, all the way from the square, all the way down to 23rd was that zoning. Property history, the Square Pool House Retreat located at 1011 South Main Street was constructed over a century ago. It was built as a single-family home and continues to be a single-family residence, residence in use and design. The physical characteristics of the property, it's a 2,872-square-foot gray two-story single-family residence, sited on a 9,000-square-foot lot. The two-story house has five bedrooms, and like I said, only four will be used. There's a master bedroom and a bathroom on the first floor, and a second bedroom with a bathroom on the second floor. A third, second-floor bedroom sits near another bathroom, and only one of the two remaining second-floor bedrooms will be able to be used. Kitchen and living areas are, of course, on the first floor. And lastly, the residence also has a pool house with a pool that will be monitored by a motion detector. Characteristics of the area, the surrounding, single-family neighborhood area has both large and small houses on, on rather deep lots, but they're quite narrow. Most of the area houses are pre-World War II bungalows and two stories with porches. Main Street has curbs, guttering, and sidewalks, and in that media area, it actually has recently been rebuilt. Parking, the property has shared two-car driveway on its north, leading to the back portion of the property. More than five cars can be parked on the site, including two in the garage, and one on the street in front of the house. And really guests and security, all the applicants will, okay, all applicants will be screened ahead of time. My sentence structure there is not very good. And let neighbors know how to reach managers if there's ever a problem. The applicant has to address the following topics. As far as noise monitoring, the applicant will install a noise monitoring system that will notify the applicant if the decibel level is above 85 dB for more than five continuous minutes. Trash removal, they've indicated that Ted's Trash Service will provide weekly pickup. Property listing, the property will be listed on the Airbnb and the VRBO sites. Business operations and security, the Square Pool House Retreat LLC will be responsible for most of the business operations, including the site security, screening customers, and coordinating bookings. The city's short-term rental list, that form was completed by the applicant, covering the licensing, future inspections, insurance, onsite information posting, and so forth. Fire safety, evacuation plan has been submitted with the floor plans, as you saw, and include the escape hand, escape, escape plan that will have to be posted, as the code requires. Building inspection, the property has been inspected by the fire inspector and passed the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspection. And, like I said, the closest short-term rental was across Nolan Road, almost three blocks away. So here's the house, it's up on the hillside there, above the sidewalk, looking to the east, sitting right out the intersection, looking down Stone. So this is up Main Street, looking back towards the square, and then this is looking down Stone to the west, and then this is looking down Main toward the, toward 23rd Street. Staff recommends approval of this short-term rental with the following conditions. Number one, the short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article 3, Chapter 5 of the city code. The occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. Number two, the business shall comply with all safety and other standards established by Section 14420 of the city code. Number three, the maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to eight persons. The maximum number of bedrooms shall be four. And number five, the, the noise monitoring system shall be installed and activated, the Good Neighbor Guidelines, evacuation plan, and other notices will be properly posted, all prior to the business license. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Will the applicant come forward, please?
Brian, real quick, did you say that's a shared driveway?
Um, I don't think it is. Let me look back at the aerial photograph here. I don't, they're not, it's, it's congruent. I mean, they touch each other, so I guess it's kind of shared. But it's, no, it's two separate driveways that touch.
Okay.
Basically.
Thank you. If you'll state your name and address, please.
Hillary Wright, 1509 South Osage Street, Independence, Missouri, 64055.
Rachel Bailey, 24621 East Truman Road, Independence, Missouri.
Thank you. And if you'll go ahead and tell us about the house.
1011 South Main Street, Independence, Missouri, sits seven blocks from the Independent Square.
Ma'am, can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, sorry. Usually people speak too loud. Okay, sorry. Okay, 15, or, excuse me, 1011 South Main Street, Independence, Missouri, sits, and it has actually sidewalks that they mentioned, seven blocks from the Independent Square. It also has a pool house. Recently, we bought it in December of nineteen, or of twenty, just last year. We since replaced the roof, the HVAC system. We have, you know, power washed the siding, that didn't need to be replaced yet. We replaced the pool liner and several other things, and updated the property significantly as far as like, you know, paint and making sure that we kept the interior, or integrity of the property and its original architectural design. And would, with the city's permission, we'd like to run that as a short-term rental because we just, when we saw it, immediately, honestly, I thought this, this, I want to share this. We both thought the same thing. I want to share this with others because it's an amazing experience just to go inside of there. I don't know what else I could tell you.
Questions?
Question for you is the pool house. I mean, what kind of liability are you guys having with having a pool access? That's what's bothering me right there.
Yeah, that's a valid question, and I agree. In fact, we did put security cameras, both for all the exterior doors, as well as inside of the pool house, that is 24-hour monitoring. Also has a backup device that will monitor it. And then we additionally, it's, so, the house is separate from the pool by a breezeway, so we added an additional lock key code, and we plan to make that key code separate from the main house key code in the event that the kid saw behind the parent, as well as we have a door monitoring system that really loudly says, "Pool Door Room Open." In addition to that, it is a sports pool, so it does have four foot across with a dip in the middle that goes to approximately five foot. We do have very clear rules presented in both the entry of the pool area and our rules online, it would be online, but right now, just what we've prepared ahead of time in the event that we are able to proceed. And then we, of course, have the liability, and we've asked others in the community that have had pools on how we can be proactive in preventing any kind of concerns like that, like, you know, kids drowning. We are both mothers, so.
Well, I understand. It bothers me that you'd want to rent something like that, that's what's bothering me. I mean, it's nice, I mean, my other question's going to be, since it is five bedrooms, how are you keeping the fifth bedroom from not being used? Are you turning it to storage, or what? Are you turning it to storage or what?
It's a wonderful question. We actually put a force, a first floor bedroom, um, with the Murphy bed concept so that it is not displayed as a bedroom, but it can be pulled out as a queen-sized bed with extra supports if needed for like, if somebody came in that couldn't do stairs, um, with a family member that, you know, had a hard time tra- going up and downstairs. That that could be used as an extra bedroom or additional space for families to, you know, gather, play games.
Okay, so you're saying you can use it as a fifth bedroom is what you're saying then?
Yes, there's an option too.
But you're, but we're stipulating that you can't have more than eight people, right? So what we're saying, Brian, or?
Correct.
That's correct.
She mentioned kids.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Uh, she mentioned kids, so is the eight people adults and kids? Is it eight total? Cause in the application, it says eight adults and four kids.
We, according to our rules, it's maximum of ten with kids, according to the rules.
And, um, we, um, when we first bought the house in December, we had the understanding that there were more guests, um, and then the new licensing changes, we now understand the new rules. So, um, our goal was to have Grandma and Grandpa, bring grandkids come, experience Kansas City, enjoy their stay. If there was something that was canceled, like a concert, to encourage them to stay in our city, bring their business to our city, buy at our restaurants. We, um, love the venue because it allows them to stay and not cancel their trip because they already have a onsite activity at the house. So, um, initially we planned for more, but do plan to follow the rules as, um, the new stipulations require.
Question. Statement then question. Code section one-four dash four-two-four dash zero-eight. Maximum number of bedrooms shall be four or fewer. So let me ask the question again. How do you intend to render the fourth bedroom upstairs? So that you have three bedrooms upstairs along with the one bedroom downstairs? You don't get to have the option of a Murphy bed in the room when it's not desirable as a bedroom. You can only have four. So tell me, how do you intend to render one of the bedrooms upstairs inoperable as a bedroom?
You made her wish come true. She's wanted the extra room as an office this entire time. So we'll go ahead and set it up professionally for a full-size desk so that it can be used as a, um, working space for anybody who's traveling.
Plan, thank you. I knew you would have a plan.
She's had it this whole time.
The whole time. So you got one bedroom that you'll have on the main floor in event someone can't move the up and down the stairs. And you will have three bedrooms and an office with a full-size desk that is not going to ever be used as a bedroom, right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. You did say you were nurses. Did I hear that?
My husband's a nurse, he's been a, uh.
Smart people.
Yes, very smart people. I've been a family nurse, as my mom's a nurse, my sister's a nurse.
Thank you. Uh, you're back, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I think part of the confusion on the, on the number of people allowed, so the code actually allows a maximum of ten people. What I s- I said eight persons on the conditions, it should say eight adults.
Eight adults, right.
I used the word persons instead of adults.
I think we all knew that, but it probably should read eight adults. Are there a maximum number of children in addition to the eight adults? Can you have fourth kids?
The way it reads is ten persons max. So, okay. No more than two guests excluding children five years old or younger per bedroom are permitted per guest stay. The total maximum occupancy of ten occupants, which includes adults and children.
Thank you.
So for some of us, you can have two adults and six kids. Or.
Yes.
Two adults. Any other questions? Thank you.
Question, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Tell me about your understanding, the codes and the clarity and how did you come to understand all of the complexities? And what do you recommend that we do for points of clarification for the next applicant?
Uh, we appreciate that you listed things online as well as had staff in person that we were able to ask questions to. And then it was great to be able to access Brian when he was in the office as well. Um, we are, um, active participants in multiple, uh, small groups that meet across Kansas City that are advocates for supporting, um, small businesses, specifically real estate businesses. We'd like to support, um, individuals, uh, go with, uh, long-term, short-term rentals. And, um, there are, uh, regular weekly meetings for those groups and we are regularly in the group discussing how we can support and encourage, um, different councils, uh, different cities that need, um, uh, further help with understanding what, um, uh, let me take a step back. Uh, we spend time looking online, finding out what people need to make sure that we can bring the best value to the small businesses that provide to the guests that, um, choose to live in Kansas City. Um, we've seen a lot of guests that are moving here, that are remote employees that choose to live in Kansas City. And we dare best to, um, provide housing that is, um, adequate for that city. So, um, thank you for posting that online so that we're able to have that as well as having offices here that we can access staff.
They were very clear to understand. In fact, uh, on that note, we have, in, I hope you don't mind, we kind of actually used the, some of your codes, uh, in order to help the Kansas City and we were working with the Kansas City Police Department, um, because we're crime-free certified, um, in order to kind of be proactive rather than reactive. And, I mean, that's really a compliment to you guys because we, it was so clear and concise that we actually recommended it to others.
Thank you. Yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, if there's no more questions, we will go to the public, thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? If you'll state your name and address, please.
My name is Devin Carroll. I live on five-twenty-one Ralston Avenue. I believe this property would be a fantastic addition into the neighborhood as it stimulates local business growth, especially being so close to the square. So with that being said, uh, the square is a fantastic place for local businesses. It is amazing, I, I go there all the time myself. And I would love to see more and more people be introduced to the environment that we have here in Independence because it's, you know, where I grew up and it's where I love. And it's where I, you know, continue to be and rightfully so, I, I do love this place. So I believe that, you know, short-term rentals would be perfect, uh, in introducing more small business and, uh, that noise monitoring, I know, is a fantastic tool as well, as well as the, the camera system that, uh, I personally helped tailor for that house.
Yes, um, I am Amy and this is Charles Kissler. Um, we are owners and innkeepers of the Silver, Silver Heart Inn Bed and Breakfast at, uh. Uh, we are at the.
Would you start over?
Sure. Um, we are the owners and innkeepers of Silver Heart Inn Bed and Breakfast at eleven-fourteen South Nolan Road. And, um, as owners of the Silver Heart Inn, we want to ensure the ongoing success and five-star rating of our bed and breakfast. This inn has been established, established business for over ten years and with an excellent reputation for a quality luxury stay within a historic neighborhood. We have worked hard to maintain all requirements set forth by the City of Independence and the State of Missouri. We have concerns regarding a new business starting in our own backyard. We have read the bill number twenty-two dash one-zero-seven, ordinance number one-nine-four-one-two and would like to address the following concerns. Stated in that ordinance, section number six, uh, fourteen dash four-two-four dash zero-six, uh, density limitations. No short-term rental shall be proposed within five hundred feet from the property line of an, another existing or proposed short-term rental. This is very close, um, pretty much in our backyard from where our business is. Um, and we have worked very, very hard, um, coming in as new owners and working with the previous owners to maintain the existing amazing reputation that it has and are concerned about not just as a business standpoint, but with, um, the noise level, um, that was previously stated. And then also, we had also so noted, um, as previously, previously stated, the maximum number of bedrooms. And I think that question was answered with the office. Um, and then again, the noise management level, be- being that it is so close. Um, and we live onsite, that is our home and we know firsthand how hard it is. Even the best rules, the best things that you have in place, things happen. And we are right there onsite and we can take care of it as soon as things happen and squash it. Um, even though you might be a phone call away, we still have concerns about like, like someone had mentioned the pool, the liability. With our reputation and as a, you know, a staple in the City of Independence, people come to us specifically because we're a historic site and, you know, we are about to get on the historic registry. And any kind of bad press or something happens there, it could negatively reflect on us. Um, we are definitely, uh, want to support other businesses, um, in the area. However, these, we just wanted to make the council aware of our concerns.
Thank you.
Yes, if I may, um, Charles Kissler again.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my main concern is the fact that we have a rental property just right over the fence, right where they are. And the only complaints that I have ever seen online, we have a, a certified excellence on TripAdvisor for the past ten years. Um, we have amazing reviews from our guests. Um, the problem I have is the fact that the only problem I've ever seen from a guest is the fact they say the noise level on Nolan Road. So what are they going to do when there's noise behind the cottage and noise in front? Nobody will want to stay there. I don't believe it'll be quiet, not with a pool that size. So the noise level is going to disturb. Um, I know there's a, another rental place right beside it. Don't really hear anything from over there, but I mean, you're not going to be quiet in a pool area. I just don't think with the proximity close to our cottage, that it's supposed to be a quiet stay. That is one of the quietest places that we have to offer. And if a guest says, "Hey, I would like to stay somewhere that's actually quiet," we offer that rent cottage because it's the most quiet place in the property. I don't believe it will be once that short-term rental is there.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against the case? All right, hearing none, would you like the applicant to come back up? Applicants, sorry.
I'd like to ask a question of the city staff. Looking at our map, there's only one red dot. They mentioned a rental right next to a rental and this property within the five hundred feet of their property. Can you clarify if that's your findings?
Okay, um, if you're talking about the historic B and B, right, yeah. That's a different classification, so of course this, that's a bed and breakfast. And this map i- is specifically short-term rental, so that's why it wasn't included on this map because it's a different classification.
Thank you, I just wanted that clarified.
And then the other rental I think he was talking about was that apartment.
Okay.
Project that's immediately south.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back. Commissioners, any questions?
I'd just simply like to hear a response from the applicants per the op- I shouldn't say from their opposition, but from a concerned business owner who will be your back fence neighbor. And what do you do, intend to do to ensure your quiet stay and the quiet stay at this historic location? Thank you.
Delete on this.
Actually, first of all, I want to say thank you. Um, we've been wanting to come and introduce ourselves and sorry if we had to meet this way. But thank you for bringing your concerns to us. Um, and, um, my, our response to those and you all pertaining to that is we have gotten actually, um, they told us about the minute. Um, so we have that on order as well as we found what's called a party crap, uh, squatter? Squasher. And in addition to that, it wasn't mentioned as far as approval-wise, but we were already going to put, um, a device in both the house as well as the pool house in order to monitor the noise. That was, um, our pu- plan as well as the fact that it is, um, an enclosed pool area as well as there is a two-car garage in the back in between that fence. Um, I don't believe our fence line is adjacent because I actually looked at that. But, um, in addition to that, I live a minute away.
Ma'am, could you address the planning commissioner?
I'm sorry, I didn't know who I was supposed to address. Thank you, thanks for clarifying. Um, so, uh, if there is an event that is going on and they let us know or the neighbors let us know, I mean, we're part of the community as well. Um, we will go over there and make sure that that is, because it is a violation to our, um, our actual rules of, because I have two Airbnb's actually down at the lake, so I've had them for a couple of years. And we put extra rules in place in addition to what the, um, sites recommend in order to try to keep it a nice quiet stay and not have the neighbors affected because I'm a neighbor as well and I wouldn't appreciate that. So I do unto others as we want it done to ourselves. So that's why we decided to go ahead and put it into both rooms or the house in the room just to make sure that we can control the noise that way. We're still playing with the crew devices, sorry.
And maybe Brian just didn't say it loud enough for me to hear. So your pool is an enclosed pool?
Correct.
It's not an open-air pool?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, looking at my notes here. Before we owned the property, a gentleman owned the property for more than twenty years. He actually built the enclosed pool house as well as the pool and the, it's all level, um, brick patio that surrounds the pool. Um, we actually have, um, interviewed a variety of different pool servicing companies and we have found the company that serviced that pool for that previous owner for many years. He was able to tell us about the history and how much stuff the guy had and all of that. So I think my, um, follow-up question is, or, um, supporting, uh, comment is that the pool's been there for many years. Um, it has been used, it has, um, the property's been lived in. There were people that were actively living in it with kids before we bought it. And so if it wasn't a concern prior, um, then would it necessarily be a new concern with another family visiting at the, uh, residence?
I think most of us thought of a pool house as a building adjacent to the pool in support of the pool, but this is actually an enclosed.
Enclosed and it has an integrated heater, a shop heater for heating the space and then wall system vents because it has a plexiglass roof, so it can get warm in the room. And so then you turn on the fans that are integrated into the building. And this was all built in twenty years ago from the age of the equipment verified by our electrician and HVAC, um, provider. And, um, and it has windows that are, you can open and close, it's, it's all enclosed with cedar walls.
And quite frankly, when the fans are on.
You have to go into the mic.
We couldn't have a conversation actually this close. We couldn't have a conversation actually this close, because they're pretty loud. Yeah, they move the air really good, but they're pretty loud. And we haven't heard of, I mean, we've asked the neighbors adjacent to it if there have been concerns with that, before we, you know, decided on which direction we're going to go with it.
Great, thank you.
Ma'am Chair, so what I would go back to, if the fans are that loud, it would probably set off the decibel of readers.
That's what we were going to play with.
Okay, my question's going to be, I would like to add to number five, that we have two noise monitors installed, one upstairs and one downstairs. That way, we're covering, somebody just putting one upstairs and not covering downstairs for noise. I know you guys would probably want to do that, but I'm just trying to cover the city aspect, so that way, we, they're not putting one upstairs in a bedroom where they don't have a baby sleeping, and when they're having a party downstairs, and they can't hear it. So that's why I would like to have that added on to that, if that's approval for the rest of the staff.
Is there anything in code already addressing split level?
I don't think, it's not that specific.
But I think the Commissioner makes an excellent point, that perhaps we should revisit that, because if the noise monitoring system is upstairs where the bedrooms are, but the entertainment area is on the lower level.
So you would be thinking about a minute, minute monitoring system on each habitable floor?
We could ask someone.
Well, I don't know.
Wait a minute, question here, he's got an answer for us.
Yes.
A resident consultant.
He's the friend of the court.
It's so handy to have you here.
Rob Scarborough, still at 603 Quincy Boulevard in Smithville. The purpose of the noise monitors is to catch a party before it happens. I mount all of mine in just outside the kitchen, as close to the dining room and living room as possible. In my experience, there isn't a lot of, there isn't a lot of noise coming from bedroom areas to disturb neighbors. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so your recommendation is that we need to say a little farther, that these monitors need to be mounted in the kitchen or living room areas, not into bedrooms or hallways upstairs, what you're.
Correct. Any place that you would expect people to gather, that's where you want it.
Well, I'm not worried about where you guys put them, I'm worried about the person that comes up here saying, yeah, I have a monitor system, but it's upstairs, so they can still have parties and not bring it on. So that's why I'm saying, we need to specify where we want the monitoring systems put in the house, what I'm saying.
So in that case, it would be in the, in the common area, kitchen, living room, dining room area?
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I'm getting at. It's not you guys, I'm saying another person comes up, gets the approval, they're putting in monitors, well, it's upstairs, the bedroom where they know the, and they still let people have parties, that's where I'm at.
May I speak to that? Because I think that's a very common conception with Airbnb hosts, that we allow parties, that we want parties. Nobody wants parties. It destroys property value, it, the cleaners have to clean up afterwards. Neighbors, cities, nobody wants parties. And it's unfortunate that the news loves to list an Airbnb party house. Do they happen? Occasionally, yes. But it overlooks the 2,000 other guests that came to town that same weekend, that it was quiet and normal and everything was good.
Okay, appreciate, thank you.
So maybe we can put it in the helpful places to put minute monitors in Airbnbs, as a little side conversation note on the ordinance. Any other questions?
Brian, on that picture there, the people that came up before, where is their location at the back of their yard? And I want to know if the people.
I believe it's the, the house down at the bottom right corner.
Is that correct?
I think that's theirs.
Yeah, so if I may, sorry, the bottom right corner of where the rental next door to them is, is at the backyard of our cottage.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Further questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. Did I already do last call for anybody who wants to speak against this case? I think I did. Ma'am, were you sworn in?
Marilyn, did you swear in?
She was not here.
Well, you can come up and I can swear you in.
First of all, let me tell you, I've got a.
Oh, no, go ahead, I know what you're going to say.
I have a significant hearing defect, so if you ask me something that I don't understand, can I have him interpret for me?
Yes, you can, but first, can you raise your right hand? You have to swear you in. Do you promise to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Now state your name and your address.
My name is Marilyn May. Address 29001 East Beth Court, Grain Valley, Missouri.
Thank you.
Can I proceed? Okay. First of all, Madam Chairman, I'd like to tell you, I think you did a wonderful job of describing Airbnbs, or even more specifically a VRBO, when you talked about how it can provide an experience to vacationers that's very different from an experience that's in a hotel. You talked about the intimacy of that experience for families. And I know that personally, because when my family vacations and I'm looking for a place, the first thing I'm looking for is a VRBO, which I prefer over Airbnb, because again, it's just our family, and it gives us that opportunity to spend that very personal time together, that's hard to do sometimes as families that are so busy. So I couldn't agree more with your description. The other thing that I wanted to say about this specific house, first of all, Independence is a wonderful historic area of the Kansas City metro area, and this house only emphasizes the same thing. This house is just absolutely beautiful. Not only will it let people who come here to vacation experience the history of the Truman Library, the Truman Home, the Vale Mansion, the old jail, on down the list of things. This house will also let the, the people renting it experience the absolute beauty of the old homes in the Independence areas. The tall windows that just let this wonderful light flood in, these wide walls that have pocket doors, I mean, that's just something you, you're not going to get in a hotel, you're not going to get in a newer VRBO, it's in an old home of Independence. So, you know, the windows are gorgeous, the pocket doors are just delightful, the woodwork in the house is, again, amazing. So it's that experience of an old city that just can't be found in the hotels. I think that's probably the main thing that I have to say.
Thank you, very much. So I'm going to mark you down as you were for the case.
What did she just say to me?
She said she's going to mark you down as for the case.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close this public portion. And Commissioners, is there any discussion for the discussion questions of the city, or I would entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think we have an excellent application. The one concern, I think, was duly noted, and I think was the response to their concerns was appropriate and on point. I can, I can support this application. Therefore, so I yield back to you.
Or you can make a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
In the matter of case number 23-400-04, short-term rentals at 1011 South Main Street, I move for approval with the stipulations as stated by staff, though I am concerned about placement of noise monitoring, but as stipulated and accepted.
I'll second that. Thank you. Yes.
Could, do we need to say anything about that fifth bedroom being an office?
Oh, yes.
It does say in here the maximum of four bedrooms, so.
Let's see, I amend, I amend, the fourth bedroom, one of the four bedrooms upstairs will be converted into a functioning office with a large immovable desk.
The recommendations are, I mean, they're pretty, they're fine, correct?
They are, they are appropriate, yes.
But we have to speak to that fourth bedroom upstairs, correct?
They do, we don't.
No, I believe, based on the conditions in the code, it's prohibited. So in the event they're in violation of it, there would be remedies for the city, there's no.
Yeah, so we remedied it by.
Address it beyond what we have.
And as presented, thank you. Thank you, Councilor.
We're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
And Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number 23-400-04, short-term rental at 1011 South Main, has been approved. Thank you, this does not go to the council. This is, this was done here. Thank you, congratulations. Yes. Okay, we, it's been requested that we can take a little bit of a break, can we take a five-minute break, please?
You're the chair, Madam Chair.
We can, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you.
That just doesn't happen all the time. I don't know how to do that.
That, that house that there, they, was an old farmhouse, and it was moved there from a farm, like in the Araldius area.
Oh, really?
That was moved by the people that owned all of those apartments that's over there by the Truman Library. The man, the son still, I think one of the sons is a lawyer. But his mom and dad had that moved there. No, I don't need to, unless they have hot dogs or something. Popcorn, hot dogs.
Pizza.
Pizza. Do we have time?
And the next one would be mild.
You know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure. You know, the house of the people in the red, he was talking about that, it was an old farmhouse out in the Araldius area, farm area, Atherton, and it was moved into there.
That house?
That house was.
Was moved to there?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, it was.
Wow.
And, and the people, and the, one of the sons is a lawyer here in town, but it was his mom and dad that had that house moved, and it was pre, it was just right after the war.
Really?
That's when it got moved, was right after the war.
Geez, I didn't think that moved houses away by you.
They did, yeah, they did. But do you know who the people that I'm trying, he owns all those apartments, or, yeah, apartments behind Truman Library that look like they're military?
Okay, I don't know.
You know?
Yeah, I don't know who that is.
Okay, I'll think of their names and tell you their name. That's who owned, his mom and dad, he still owns all of that, the son. And his mom and dad is the one, and my, my ex-husband always called him, get rich quick, because he prospered off the war. That's what, they nicknamed him.
Really?
But he, he is the one that owned that. And I can't imagine if those people didn't have a problem with the people that lived there previously and had parties and stuff, why would they need it? They, they wouldn't.
I think that would be a petition.
Well, yes, but they have an air, that's totally two different things.
Right.
An Airbnb and a bed and breakfast, two different things. After, after we speak, we'll decide. We'll say, oh, now, you were all there. Now the grand.
It's a free. She helped me rescue a German shepherd one night. She stayed up at jerk to talk about it. Look. Two.
Well, that's not very many, I don't know who's going to get out.
I'm picking up what you're putting your ass.
All right, Counselor, you ready? We're in the whole stretch.
Yeah, it's true.
I got one too. I thought, I canceled Christmas because I got in the Christmas.
I'm dying.
But then, it'll be fine. You'll be all right. And besides, you're tough, you're a lawyer.
I got a zipper going here from over my press-up standing, summer foreland.
So a mini hotel.
I have a scar from here, here, you want to see? When I broke my hip, they, they just kind of made it big circle, and must have cut it out, put a new one in. Which I've been very happy with.
Yeah. You doing signaling?
Yeah.
It's baseball.
You all right? You ready to rock and roll?
We're ready. Okay, we are back for the planning commission after a short break. Do we, do we need to yell at anybody, or? Okay, this is case number 23-400-05, short-term rental for 509 East Rankin Road. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Yes, this property is at 509 East Rankin Road, it is. Yes, this property is at five-oh-nine East Rankin Road, it is east of Nolan Road, on, and on the south side of Rankin Road. If you go basically through the car dealerships, I'd say, uh, east, and then Rankin Road makes kind of a ninety-degree there and they're on that curve, you can see where the little red circle is. This is the aerial photograph that shows the property, it's on right at the curve and it, they have like the biggest lot in the neighborhood due to the curve and then the distance to the back property line. And this is the short-term rental map, uh, you can see there's no little blue circles anywhere close to this, this is pretty much in an area where there's not any of this type of business. Okay, the Jensen's purchased this property in April of twenty-twenty-two for a place to stay when they were in the metro area for work. Mr. Jensen's job necessitates the family spending time here in Independence, in Utah, and in Texas. As they were out of the period for periods, out of the city for periods of time, they decided last September to make the house available for a short-term rental when not in the city. Last November, the city staff received a complaint regarding the short-term rental and being operated, being operated at this address. An investigation detected no violation, however. Over the next couple of months, the city received additional complaints about large crowds, transient people, parties, and numerous vehicles here. After discussion between the staff and the owners, they indicated they were operating eight, uh, short-term rental here and they would be applying for a planning commission approval and a city business license once the moratorium ceased. In conjunction with the notice from the city, they blocked all bookings for the home until this issue is resolved. Okay, characteristics of the property, this, uh, property contains a house that has over twenty-five hundred square feet. The home has three bedrooms on the floor, on the main floor, along with kitchen, bathrooms, living rooms, great room, two-car garage, and, and an enclosed patio. The downstairs contains two bedrooms, an additional rec room and, excuse me, and an adjacent rec room and a kitchen. The structure itself is red brick ranch with white trim and shutters. The double-wide driveway on the west side of the lot extends from the street to the house with a, with an auxiliary parking place, parking pad adjoining the west side of the house. All combine their space for four or five cars to park off-street. The large polygon-shaped rear yard is a feature of the property. This was planted in the early nineteen-fifties and is part of the surrounding Golden Acres subdivision, with the houses in this particular part of it constructed in the six-fifties and sixties. The applicant home was constructed nineteen-sixty-one. Most of the homes in the neighborhood are single-story ranch homes on good-sized lots. Okay, this is the applicant's property, uh, standing from the street. As you can see, it goes up a hill slightly, there's got the, the garage doors there, and then there's the auxiliary parking spot on the right side of the house. This is the main floor of the house, you can see the bedrooms there, shown, and along with the kitchen and the bathrooms and so forth. Downstairs, they have another bedroom, uh, kitchen that, uh, we'll, we'll talk about in a minute, a rec room, and then the usual utilities, utility closets. Okay, this is the house that's immediately west of the applicant's property. The similar, uh, basic ranch-style driveway on the, on the west side of the lot. Here, we're looking west up Rankin Road, you can see that it's a curb, makes a curve here before it turns, goes west towards Nolan Road. This is the house that's northwest of the site, across from the applicant's property, across from Rankin, uh, across Rankin Road, excuse me. Again, another ranch-style home. And this is another house on the north side of Rankin Road, across from the property. And then another house north of Rankin Road. Okay, here, we're looking down Rankin Road towards the east. And this is a house that is east of the site, the two houses from the applicant's property. And then this is the house that's immediately, uh, east of the applicant's site. With the attached application, applicant materials, the Jensen's have addressed the following topics. Noise monitoring, they, they plan to also install the minute noise monitoring system that will know the, notify the manager of excessive noise, but doesn't record sound or provide any video. Trash pickup, they are scheduled on a, for a weekly pickup via AAA disposal every Monday morning. They will list on the property on both Airbnb and Verbo sites. For business operations, security, Juan Vasquez, who's with K-two, excuse me, J-two KC Planning and Management Services, based in Kansas City, serves as the company's boots-on-the-ground handling, the maintenance, and security for the site, while the Jensen's manage the bookings, reservations, and so forth. The short-term rental checklist, the form that was completed by the applicant, covering licensing, future inspections, insurance, onsite, post, information posting. And then the fire, uh, is, evacuation plan has been submitted along with the floor plans of the house. The plan must be posted per code requirement. And then three, uh, fire department violations were discovered during the initial short-term safety inspection. Uh, they pertain to the installation of fire extinguisher, the need for electrical outlet covers, and the fixing of the ceiling light in the garage. Now, I did receive from the fire department today, the need to re-inspect, I believe yesterday, and those issues have been resolved. So they are now clear with the fire department. Due to the previous issues concerning this property, staff cannot recommend approval of this application. However, if the planning commission did decide to approve the request, staff recommends the following items be conditions of approval. One is the short-term rental shall, shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article Three, Chapter Five of the city code. The occupational license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. No more than two guests excluding five children, children five years and older. Excluding children five years old and, and under, per bedroom is permitted per guest day. Total occupancy is ten occupants, which includes adults and children. All sleeping areas not meeting the building code for emergency, escape, and rescue openings for proper ventilation shall cease as sleeping areas, and then per the Unified Development Code, the second kitchen in the basement does not meet the definition of a single-family dwelling unit, it must be modified or removed as not to be considered a multifamily dwelling. And then the noise monitoring system must, must be installed and activated. The Good Neighbor Guidelines, the evacuation plan, and other notices must be properly posted prior to the approval of the business license.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Stuart, did you say that it did meet fire code today?
Yes, they, uh, I got the inspection here, um, just.
Even with that bedroom being downstairs, or did they already take out all the bedroom stuff?
Well, um.
Or is that not fire code?
That, that's something that, well, it just says, "Congratulations, your business is satisfactory, completed, and passed the initial short-term rental fire and safe, and life safety inspections." Would like to take this time to thank you for making fire safety a priority. So, uh, I think our intent was is that any room, as mentioned in this condition, any room did, which did not meet the Egress standards could not be used as a bedroom.
Well, what I'm trying to figure out then, our fire codes don't say that?
Um, well, I don't know, we're, we're working with the fire department on resolving that or clarifying that issue.
Okay, 'cause that, that, that seems kind of important to me, I mean, if it's not an Egress downstairs, it shouldn't meet fire code.
Sure, we understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair.
Okay, uh, it was pointed out that that is a building code issue, not a fire code issue.
That helps. Thank you. Will the applicant, uh, any more questions in the city before we bring the applicant up? Okay, will the applicant come forward, please, and state your name and address?
Hi, so my name's Jacob Jensen, um, my wife and I live on five-oh-nine East Rankin Road. The reason we're here is obviously to request a permit. Sorry, get this out so I don't forget what I was gonna say. So our situation's a little bit different than some of them that have been presented tonight. I've come to Kansas City the last five years for my work, I'm here from March through September. I'm trying to grant, gain equity in a branch that my company owns out here, and, um, it's looking like within the next year or two I'll be promoted to actually live out here. So, my dad recommended, he's a mortgage officer, that last year we buy a house out here because we want to live out here, and that's why we bought the property, and we are grateful that we did, because with how the interest rates are now, we, we would not be able to afford the house. And so, um, we get, we got, we got the home, um, and we did something that was wrong. We, we Airbnb'd it without knowing, um, it was not our intent, we did not know that it was, it was, it was wrong, but the reason we did it is we thought, okay, I come and go, when we're here, we can stay, it'd be tough to get short-term renters because sometimes I'm gone for five months, I came back in February for a short period, it would be tough if we had guests there, and so that's why we thought short-term rental would be a good fit for us. So we, we rented it out, um, the things that we did unknowingly is obviously we didn't get a permit, and that's why we're here. Um, we received a letter in the mail, a season assist letter on January twenty-fifth from the city. On that day, we stopped all renting, we shut down all platforms, and we were sent all that information to the city verifying that that had been done. With that said, we have been collecting transient tax because we figured that's what we did, we, we, we figured that's what we had to do, so we have been collecting tax on the city, we haven't been doing it without that. Now, our, our basic goal is obviously to make sure it's in code with everything that the city requires, and talking with Stuart and going through the, the ordinance, we read through a handful of things that need to get done, and I'd like to read through what we've done to make it, um, by code, and we, it was asked to have a parking plan. Now, a parking plan that we have set up, we learned because we had issues the very first month with people parking on the street, is that all people staying at the home would have to park either in the garage, on the side of the home, or in the driveway, with the exception of one vehicle that can be parked directly in front of our home. That would ensure that there'd be no parking disruptions to anyone else on the street. Um, we were asked to have a noise management pan, plan, and like everyone else that has stayed tonight, our plan is to get the, the minute system, there's a lot of cool features, as you've heard about it today, and we could set it to a decimal level that the city asks us to to make sure it wouldn't be a disturbance if, in an event that that did happen. We were asked to provide a responsible agent that's available twenty-four-seven, um, we've done that, we've been working with it, working with this guy as far as like cleaning, he has, he has multiple Airbnbs and takes care of other properties and, and, um, he's our, like Stuart wrote, he's the guy that's there hands-on if anything's needed. My wife and I talk with the guest, uh, over the app, um, and are in communications with him, the only time we use that management is if the place needs to get cleaned, or if there's an issue that we need to report on to make sure it's resolved. Um, they also live, um, within thirty minutes of the home, so they could get there pretty quickly if there was ever an issue arise. Um, we were also asked to have evacuation plan, and every room that we have made, there's, um, an evacuation plan posted on the wall by the door and how to get out in a case of emergency. Uh, we were asked for a fire, fire safety check, I also have that letter, it was, it was recommended. We were asked to have a trash plan, um, that will be taken care by the property manager, we also had a, a couple neighbors that are for us that had said if they need help, if we need help with it, they would also help take the trash down. Um, we were asked to bring the, the other thing that we did wrong unknowingly is we didn't know that there was a rule on bedrooms or occupancy, and so when we initially had it listed, it was listed as a five-bedroom, with up to fourteen people that could, could stay there. We obviously will, pending approval, if it's approved, we would switch that to four-bedrooms and, uh, the occupancy to ten. We also were asked to have insurance on the property, uh, both the sites that we use Airbnb and VRBO have a million-dollar insurance policy for the guests, ourselves, and the property. And then the last two things as far as like building codes, so Stuart brought up the, um, the kitchen in the basement. We were unaware that you couldn't have a, a kitchen downstairs, and so what we, uh, plan on doing, pending approval, obviously, if it was approved, Stuart did tell us that if we remove a stove and remove the dishwasher down there, it would be acceptable as a, a single-family dwelling, and we would be willing to do that immediately if approved. And as far as the Egress window that, that you brought up in the basement, we have contacted the company, they are scheduled to come out on Thursday, pending approval, and that will be taken care of immediately, so there will be an exit in that bedroom in the basement. Um, it was mentioned that there's two bedrooms in the basement, that, um, there's only one down there, there's one that's a rec room that we did have some bunk beds in, those will be removed, and it will just be a recreational room with, um, with the kids, like Xbox and toys down there, it's like a small living room down there. So that's what the ordinance asked of us and the city's asked of us, and that's what we've done, to try to be within code and make sure we're being legal. Now, on the more important side, as far as like the neighbor concerns, the reason that it was not recommended, Stuart said it was because of concerns from neighbors, and I would like to address a few things, 'cause I think what's really important is the concerns that they brought up are my concerns as well, I'm not trying to clash with them, I think they're very valid concerns, and I want to make sure they're addressed. And I obviously would like to first admit that, that we made a mistake the first little bit, we, and I'm sure that the other ho, uh, people that have hosted on Airbnb can speak to me making a mistake here, when we first rented it out, we just wanted to make sure the mortgage was paid, and so we made our price extremely low, we didn't, we didn't know that you could do background checks, we didn't know that you could have reviews that you could check, and so we just had a bunch of people come in, we didn't know we could limit so people from the city can't come and stay, which obviously usually means parties, and so the first month, we learned the hard way that we had a bunch of parking on the street, large crowds, um, and we were able to meet and talk with Airbnb and VRBO on things we can do. What they recommended is obviously upping the price, which helped a bunch, we made it a two-state minimum, which helps with parties, with people are gonna throw parties, it's almost always a one-night minimum, I, one-night stay, and we don't allow guests to stay from local areas, they have to be from out of state, um, or out of town. So, the main concerns when we talked with the neighbors, I was able to, uh, talk to as many, I tried to talk to as many neighbors as possible, some didn't, not want to speak with me, but the ones that did, um, there were four main concerns, the first was obviously that it was not legal with the city, and that's why we're here to obtain that. The second was the concerns about parking, um, and I do feel with the parking plan we have, that should not be an issue going forward. And then noise and large crowds, I feel obviously with the occupancy being lower, that will help with crowds, and then as far as, uh, noise, we for tonight, how the, how the minute system works extremely well, and I feel like that will be extremely helpful to make sure that will not be a concern. And again, to re-emphasize that we care about those as well, this is a neighborhood we want to live in long-term, we don't want unhappy neighbors with us. And then the last and the major one that I think is a very valid, um, concern, is not knowing who's coming to the house, right? I can definitely empathize with that, um, I have a small child, I can understand how that could be, um, bothersome, right? So, we've learned ways that we can check things, we can require background checks, and no one can come to our property without a background check. The, also on both sites, they do reviews where hosts that have had these guests come before, they can leave a review, and we will not accept anyone in our property unless they have a perfect review from, um, from another host. So that way, we're assuring that the people coming are safe people. Along with that, I do have a list of reviews, if you guys want to look at them, no worries, if not, but we have twenty-nine reviews on our property when it was being ran illegally, I understand that, but I'm gonna use it as kind of the example of what it could be going forward. We have a four-point-nine star review, um, and we, if you read through the review, there are mainly families of the, of the twenty-nine that came, there are only five that were not families, that came for groups for like football games, or, um, uh, girls getting together right before a wedding to get the, to get together, um, coming into town. So, that, that's what we have in place to help with the neighbor concerns, um, and I, I really do feel like they are a help. Now, the other thing that we have for our home is we have, uh, security cameras all the way around our home, so that we actively monitor, and our, uh, property manager actively monitors, so nothing will be under. So nothing will be going on under our nose, not knowing what's going on. And we've also contacted neighbors that are willing to work with us and asked if there is any issue, let us know. We obviously will hopefully do it before they get to us. And then also, if there's any recommendations, including anyone that's here to protest tonight, I am more than willing to do just about anything to make them feel comfortable. I'm not saying we're doing this no matter what. I want to make sure we're good with the city. I want to make sure we're listening to their concerns. Now, with that said, the reason we weren't recommended, there was a list of complaints that were filed with the city. And I'm not, I don't want to call out and say that people are 100% lying and they're twisting truth, but there are things that are stated in there that I do not feel are accurate. And I have, luckily because of our security cameras and footage of what's been going on, I know that some of them 100% are not accurate. So just to kind of go through them, there were three main concerns that were filed with the city. The first happened the week of Thanksgiving. It was filed on November 28th. The concern was that we had a drug house and that there was people stopping by and passing off what was perceived to be drugs. And that the neighbors worried about it and contacted the police department about it. I have looked at that night, that stay that came, and the people that stayed, they're from Texas. They had four five-star reviews. They passed the background check. And the people that stayed, there were four adults, seven children, and one infant. I find it extremely hard to believe that there was a drug deal going on. And I think what's more likely what happened is there was an Uber Eats that came by and maybe dropped off some food. I have video camera of what's going on, and so I do feel that that was maybe exaggerated to, you know, maybe stir up some things against us. And I'm not trying to point fingers. I'm just saying what was stated, that from our side, it did not appear that way. The second complaint was for New Year's Eve, that there were a lot of cars in the driveway. I went back and looked at that guest, and I can show reviews on that. That guest passed the background check, had five-star reviews from other hosts. When they stayed there, they were parked in the driveway. On the granite, there were still a lot of vehicles. And I think for most people on New Year's Eve, there were probably a lot of cars parked in a lot of houses. And I don't feel like anything was done wrong there. And then the third major one was there was a report that we had a party van or a party bus that came to our house on January 7th and was dropping off large groups of people to party at our house. I went back and looked at that situation to monitor it. And the guests that came, again, had perfect star reviews from other hosts, passed the background check. We have video that I'm more than willing to share if need be that shows that those guests, there was 10 girls that were staying. One of their friends was getting married the next day. They came to town. The bus came at 7:00 PM, picked all 10 up. The video then shows that later that night, at midnight, they were dropped off and they went in the home. There was no music coming from the bus, and there was no one at the home between those hours, although on the report, it's reporting that there was a big party all night long, even though we have video footage that that's not accurate. So my main reason of bringing these up is not to get into the he said, she said type of thing, but I do think that it's valid when there are complaints, that they're valid complaints and that they go through the right system, and it's not just someone unhappy because there's someone there. Going down the rest of the notes that were marked on my home, we received the cease and desist letter on the 25th. And I have, or sent everything over showing that we stopped all renting. And we have tried to be as compliant as we can with the city and the code. And we've talked to several neighbors, a few who have letters that I can share with you if need be that are for it. And it's extremely important for me and my wife, we want to stay here. It's a beautiful home. Where, if any of you guys know about the LDS faith or Mormons, or what they call it, we have an extremely big church history site just down the street. I've heard about Independence since I was three, four years old. I have family that has already come, church family members that have come out and have already stayed at the property when we were not here to go see the site. I think it's a lovely site. We've done a great job at maintaining it. And I know that there are some unhappy neighbors with us, and I apologize to them. And I promise I will do everything I can to make sure their concerns are met.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
This was one of the best presentations I've ever seen before this commission. Unfortunately, you only get one shot at a first impression. I'll give it back to Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? If you'll state your name and address, please.
My name is Norma Higbee. I'm at 512 Rankin Road. I am across the street and down one house from the house that we're talking about. They're a lovely couple, young, have the most beautiful little girl I've ever seen. I think they would make great neighbors. And the neighborhood is beautiful, Golden Acres, and it's well-known. The one thing that I've learned tonight, because I've never been to a meeting for this type of thing, is that there are so many rules that you have to follow, which is good. I wish that when someone purchases a house, that they have the same rules as you have for short-term. We have, behind my house, we had a person growing bamboo. And if you know anything about bamboo, it spreads and spreads and spreads. I went to our neighborhood, they wouldn't do anything. I went to the city council, they didn't do anything. I found out that a lot of cities have ordinances against bamboo. Nothing was ever done. The woman who lived in that house called the TV station was on the news about how the city council was against what they were doing because there was all kinds of activity behind their house. And my house is right there. I've never, we've been, we have lived there 28 years, and I've never seen any activity, anyway. The people who live next door to us, they never cut the grass. They have cars there that don't run. Nothing's ever been done about that. With an Airbnb, you have so many rules, and as far as I'm concerned, it's great. Because they have to have somebody there to cut their grass. They have to have somebody there to take the trash away. They have a manager there. In their situation, they, I think it's ingenious. I would have never thought of this. They want to live here, long-term. His job makes him live away from here at times. How are they gonna pay their mortgage? So they rented out. Myself, I am looking forward to it. I have family in Iowa that comes down every so often. And they have to stay at the casino. They have to stay at a hotel downtown. Because if you know Independence, where are they gonna stay in a hotel? I-70? I don't think so. You know, that's not a good place to send your relatives to stay. But, so they have, go downtown or they have to go farther east. I think this is a great idea. My family could stay there. I'm footsteps away from them as far as food, activity, bring them uptown, do things we've... They've come into town. We've gone to the pizza place. We've gone to the Mexican place uptown. We've toured. I love it. So anyway, I am absolutely for this Airbnb. There's not, that I know, I don't know where there's a closer one to our neighborhood. I think they are the only ones that are gonna be there. It's a perfect opportunity to have a lovely couple and their children come and live in our neighborhood. And just for a few months, they rent it out to help pay their mortgage. I see no problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ma'am?
I'm sorry.
On the one that lives next door, the grass and the cars, have you reported that to codes?
I haven't. I'm a little concerned about turning them in is that, you know, you don't know what somebody's gonna do to come back at you if you cause problems.
I understand, but I mean, that's something, I don't know if they're doing it anonymously or not, but that's something they do. So you can do that, so.
Yeah, I know. I could do that. And as like I said, the bamboo, my next-door neighbor and I tried to fight that, and nothing was ever done. So we finally quit on that, so.
I'm just suggesting maybe turn them in codes. So since you see how it happens when they got turned in, maybe it happened for the codes. Okay?
Okay, thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak for the case? Oh, you're, okay. You're like the segue, the transition. State your name and address, please.
David Ross, 808 East Manor Road, Independence, Missouri. I am not here to speak in favor or in opposition. I am proud to be the president of Golden Acres. We do not have an official HOA. We are called the Golden Acres Community Senator Association, and I've served in that role for the past nine years. But before I get started, there's a couple of housekeeping things that I've picked up as we've listened to staff and the applicant. I don't think it came up, I think it was in November, that this commission did approve an Airbnb on Manor Road. So I don't know why that did not show up within, maybe it's not within the distance or whatever. I can't remember what the exact address is. Oh, Bed and Breakfast, so that's different. And during the applicant's speech, he has posted, and maybe this is because it's not the minute, I think he's required to put the minute thing in, but he has posted in our conversations directly and online that he has a noise reduction system. And maybe it's not the same one that is required. And maybe Jake can point that out a little later. So as I stated, not here to oppose or be not in favor. Golden Acres is one of, is, in a lot of people's minds, the best neighborhood in Independence, Missouri. It's historic, it's quaint, it's a very tight-knit group. It is actually the first neighborhood, established neighborhood in the city of Independence, Missouri back in 1931. We have a neighborhood watch email string that we do. And our neighbors are coached very effectively that if they see anything suspicious or anything out of whack, to don't just assume it doesn't mean anything. It, call the police, call 911. And to Mr. Nesbit's point, we are not an official HOA. So anytime I get these complaints about different things, I say, we follow city code. Go to city code. There's a great avenue enabled to file things. So how this came to my attention was on around January 7th, because people started contacting me about activity that was going on at 509 Rankin. So I went to the directory, our directory, there was no ad, no name listed at 509 Rankin. And I'm not saying that's Jake's fault. I know he's a recent move-in there, may not have got the mail, may not, you know, whatever. So I had no way to help. I had no person to contact, did not know Jake at that time. But the communication kept coming from neighbors, which I think you'll probably hear from tonight. And it came out at that time that basically it was being operated as a short-term rental. And, excuse me, and pictures of party buses were, party bus was being circulated and things like that. So I sent an email to all the residents on Rankin that had an email on file with me. Not everybody wants to be on those email chains, IBCC, everybody, so it, but... And to try to find out if anybody knew who we could contact about, so we could get a handle on what was going on. And that's when it came to my attention that it was being operated as a short rental and was not permitted. But my main point of being here is it's a fantastic neighborhood. I want, and I know we have a lot of neighbors here tonight. And I wanted to be publicly on record to state that no matter how this goes tonight, that we will hopefully enter a process to get some healing within this neighborhood. Because it is very tight. It's very tight-knit, and we think it's very, very special. So I am willing to be a part of that process to help mend the fences that have been occurring because of lack of communication. And through my email to the people on Rankin, I was able to finally talk to Jake. And he sent an email out to those neighbors as well. So, but there, it's been pretty contentious. And I just want our neighbors to know that no matter how this thing goes out, let's try to make an effort to remain a tight-knit community. So, thank you.
Thank you. How, I'm gonna ask a quick question. How many are wanting to speak tonight? Okay, we're good. I was gonna do my three-minute rule, but I don't have to. Any, those who would like to speak against this case? Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone who would like to speak against this case? Come on up. If you'll state your name and your address, please.
My name is Cheryl Roerman, and I live at 605 East Rankin. There's one house between myself and the short-term rental that's been happening. I'm gonna try to keep this pretty concise, so that we don't go on and on. I've lived at my current address in Golden Acres for the last 19 years. It's always been a place where neighbors are respectful of one another and look out for each other. Motels and hotels are often a magnet for criminal activity, and I would never purchase a home next door to one. This house has proven to be suspect for the last seven months. The owners who live in Utah and their cleaning slash-management company have no way of knowing who's coming to this property or for what purpose, or the additional people who show up at the property. These are the things that I have witnessed in the last seven months. You have four to six carloads of people that are seemingly renting the house. Then you have the other people who show up, usually between the hours of 8:00 PM and 5:00 AM the following morning. I've witnessed party buses drop people into the house late at night, loud music coming out of the party bus. And that's in addition to who's already in the house. I've seen up to 17 cars up and down the street. I've seen cars and vans drop people into the house and leave. And that's in addition to the people who are already there. This is the concerning thing. There seems to be people who are there renting four to five, six, four to five, six carloads there from Friday, Saturday, and leaving Sunday. And then you have the additional people who show up, whoever they are. And this is all the time. This is not once in a while. Another thing that's very concerning that I've witnessed is caught multiple cars pulling up to the house, people running from the house, some sort of short inner, you know, something goes on between them. something goes on between them, they have some kind of little communication, and then the car speeds away at a very rapid speed, and someone goes back in the house. And that's not just once, that's like multiple, you know. We have no way of knowing the backgrounds or even who these many people are that are showing up at the house, and this is on a weekly basis. The owners were asked by the city in January of 2023 to stop renting the house. They did not. I was very shocked to hear the homeowner say that they stopped, because they did not stop. They continued every single weekend except one, the rental people continued to come. I would ask that you not approve this short-term rental in our neighborhood. It has already proven to be very suspect, and a license and a piece of paper is not gonna change that fact. I don't believe the owners themselves, who now live in Utah, would have wanted to tolerate what we have tolerated for the last seven months in our neighborhood. The cleaning management company, they also are living peacefully in their own homes while we put up with all of this. And I'm gonna add this just from listening, this isn't in my notes, but I want to kind of address whoever the management company is. Because when I went online to look at the name of that company that cleans slash management, I found multiple phone numbers, none of them matching the one on the license, and I found multiple locations, like Lee Summit in Johnson County, but I found no specific address. So my question is, it said online that he had managed a cleaning company for three years, and he's not better business, Better Business Bureau certified, but there were no complaints about his cleaning company that he manages for three years. It also listed him as a handyman, but I could not find anywhere where he is a property manager. And I'm just saying that, I don't know anything about that part, but I'm just bringing that up as a concern. Anyway, I am not unsympathetic to a young family that would like to live in our neighborhood, it's a great neighborhood, but for seven months, the young family has been nowhere in sight, and the things I just told you is what's going on. I would ask you, please do not approve this.
Thank you. Next. And again, if you'll state your name and your address, please.
Mike Talcott, 1901 South Lake Drive in Golden Acres. I'm gonna make this real quick, um, and I'm gonna kinda go on Dave's back as far as the neighborhood. It was established in 1931 as the first planned subdivision. According to the city's own website, we're known for its longevity of homeownership. That statement does not do it justice. We currently have multiple families that have multiple generations, living in two or three different homes within the subdivision. In other words, grandparents living down the street from children and across the street from their grand, grandchildren. My kids' great-great-grandparents lived two doors up from, uh, up the street from us, or from me, and, um, that home was passed down to their great-grandparents. My daughter lived across the street from me for many years until they moved to the country. Homes are passed down from generation to generation, and those generations often choose to stay in the neighborhood. It's a unique, quiet neighborhood, one of Independence' best-kept secrets. We hold holiday events and parades, pancake breakfasts, ice cream socials. We've had talented neighbors, uh, and if lucky enough to catch him, we have one that's even heard playing his cello out in his yard. Uh, we, we clear each other's snow-covered driveways and rake each other's leaves. We all know each other and look out for each other. Our kids play together on quiet, winding streets with little traffic. We all know each other's dogs, greet them on daily walks. This isn't a place for short-term rental and, uh, one that advertised, that had advertised that it could accommodate large groups. It was built on the, uh, origin, originally the Charles Gudgel and Thomas Alexander Governor Simpson Cattle Farm. Gudgel imported anxiety forth from England, which is known as the father of American Herefords. Historical marker stands outside our clubhouse where the barn first stood. Neighbors recently pooled money together to upgrade our clubhouse grounds and park, and the American Hereford Association was a proud sponsor and attended the park's grand reopening. This is not a public park, it's for residents' use only. So would this park be listed as a, as an amenity for the short, short-term rental's use, whose guests have no vested interest in the upkeep of this area? If no, how would that be monitored? The short-term rentals guests do not pay our HOA fees, as the neighborhood, um, we would like to know, uh, or how would we know that the short-term rental management guarantee that our residents will not be pushed out using the park or damage the equipment? The claim that, uh, Airbnbs are safe by screening and rating their customers is, is a false sense of security. I would ask you all to look into the 2021 in-depth Bloomberg report outlining how the company spends millions of dollars to make nightmares go away. No one can honestly make the claim that short-term rentals are not detrimental to neighborhoods because companies like Airbnb's secrecy, uh, make it difficult for academics and police departments to accurately gather data. As this particular listing in Golden Acres was advertised for large groups, this is concerning for a quiet neighborhood. With the NFL Draft and World Cup soccer events approaching, the concern is magnified. These groups will not be, uh, the same type of people visiting Independence to go to the Truman Library or attend a family reunion, they're here to party. The fact that we have already seen that these, uh, that it was, the short-term rental was being operated illegally does not give much confidence that would be operated and managed appropriately in the future. This is not appropriate, this is not appropriate for a neighborhood for this type of rental. And I kinda say the same thing, as far as we welcome people in the neighborhood that wanna live there, but with the type of neighborhood that we have, we've got lots of kids, and we don't, you know, we don't want people racing up and down the street, we wanna know who's in our neighborhood, because we do look out after each other. And, um, so that's, that's kinda, that's kinda it. We welcome people as neighbors, but a short-term rental is not appropriate for our neighborhood.
Thank you. Next person. If you'll state your name, address, please.
Yes, uh, my name is Jeffrey Mitchell, and I live at 601 Rankin, which is the house directly to the east of the property, uh, for the application. Um, there's not a lot that I can really say that hasn't been said already, I'm not gonna waste your time. Um, I do wanna clarify that we were not notified that this rental was happening. We had to find that, find this out on our own, online. It was listed on VRBO and Airbnb for big parties. That's exactly what we got. Uh, one thing about the noise monitors, that doesn't monitor the noise out in the street. And yes, there was a party bus, I have pictures if you wanna see it. Um, I have an odd schedule, I work weekdays, I work weekends, I work days, I work nights. So a quiet neighborhood is very important. So when I hear a diesel bus idling next door to my house, late at, fairly late at night, it concerns me. And then I hear it come back again, that concerns me even more, that interrupts my sleep, which is poor enough as it is. Um, at this point, I, I see steps that are being made to try and address some of these issues. One issue I still have is, is the number of occupants. I still think the four bedrooms is a little much. I think if there are less people, there's less apt to be big parties. Um, I'd like to see it, uh, not approved at this point. I'd like to see, uh, Jake and his family live through the summer and stay in the neighborhood and get to know all the residents and, and be involved in some of these excellent activities, and then let's come back in the fall and see what he wants to do, and let's, you know, discuss it at that point and maybe get a license at that point. If he's truly intending on staying from this point until fall, why can't we wait? You know, is there something against that? And let's address some of these other issues and, and then come back then. That's just, that's my solution. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I keep forgetting to turn my mic back on. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for, against this case? Okay, I am going to have the applicant come back up. And give you a chance to address any of those end-all issues.
Yeah, for sure. So a few things to go back, so, I do believe we've already tried to make really good relationships. Jeff, who just came up, regardless of what happens tonight, we have no ill feelings towards him or his wife Kathy. In fact, last year, we had a, one of our trees, a big branch fell down, and when they were getting tree removal done, he came over and helped us take it off. We've stopped by their house and dropped off cookies as a thank you, that we've tried to have a good relationship that way. Um, I do have documented text messages that I've brought that have been between my wife and I, um, and Kathy, Jeff's wife, about the Airbnb, so them saying they were not notified about it is not accurate. Um, we notified Jeff, we notified, and Kathy, and we notified Tom, who lives next to us on the other side. Karen lives across the street from us, and then Steve, Steve lives across the street from us as well. We have a neighbor that lives behind us, his name, um, he, he actually asked me not to share his name, because he doesn't wanna get caught up in between this, but he is the one that mows our lawn. He actually helped clean our property for a while, um, until we got asked to have a property manager, and that's why we have hired the new property manager. I have pulled up my phone on Google when, when Cheryl said that they don't have any reviews, on Thumbtack they have 4.6 reviews, it has their location. I have it right here, so I don't know why they're saying they cannot find that. Um, another thing that makes us sad is, one of the reasons we wanted to move to this home, there were really two main reasons. My wife comes from a small town and has a huge lot, we've always wanted a big lot, and we love that home for it. The second reason, we've heard, as has been stated tonight, how great Golden Acres is. There are obviously some spots in Independence that can be, can be better, and we, we chose this location specifically for safety, it's one of the safest spots on the whole map of Independence. Um, now, as far as like, um, what Cheryl brought up with the 17 vehicles, that occurred the first month that I shared with you, was one of our issues, we made a mistake. She's absolutely right, that's inappropriate, we do not want that to happen. But that comes down to a parking concern, and I feel like with our parking plan, that should not be an issue moving forward. Um, as far as like, people dropping things off and running away from our house, I've went back in preparation for this, at everyone that stayed at my home, and I have video footage of everything that's happened, and I'm more than willing to show that data. I, I just feel like things are being twisted about what's truth. I know Jeff said he has a picture. Well, I have a video. A picture, you can take a picture of something and say something happened based off of what the picture says, but a video, there's no, there's no doubt about what happened, and it's not illegal for a car to come and drop and pick someone up, it's like an Uber, but these girls wanted to be in the same vehicle together. Um, when they're talking about other vehicles, uh, we can hear what conversations happen when people, when they leave our house. There were a few times that groups left, and they had an Uber pick them up, and you can hear in the video, because they don't wanna get a DUI and things, so it's people that are trying to be safe in the community. Um, as far as what Jeff brought up with it being too many people, I, I agree from what we've seen, like 14 guests, that was too much. We, the only reason we advertised it that way is we looked down, okay, how can we cover our mortgage? We looked at data, what, what we need to do that would present that, and it said, suggested that we do that. As soon as we found out about it, obviously it stopped, and, um, and I, I just, I feel like things that are being shared, there are truths to them, but there's also two sides to the coin, and I feel like if they're gonna be taken in as a valid complaint, we need to see exactly what's going on, and that's why I'm very grateful I have video, and I'm grateful I have reviews, I'm grateful I save text messages between neighbors because they have been notified. In fact, there was a time that, the very first month, Kathy, who is Jeff's wife, texted us about an issue that happened with, obviously, that large group. And that large group of 17, it was for a grandmother, they were throwing a birthday party, it should not have happened, right? But the, but we got a message that it was loud, and what happened is, as soon as we found out, and I still have text messages with the time, we reached out to the guest, immediately it got quieter, we text Kathy, said, is it, things better? She's like, yes, it's good. And so them saying that we're not willing to work, we have documentation that we have done that. So I still understand their concerns, the, the second guy that talked, I'm sorry, I don't know who you are, I don't believe you live on our street. Um, I have talked with the neighbors directly across us, the three neighbors, one of them here, one has a letter, other one didn't wanna come because they didn't wanna get mixed in between the contention, they all were okay with it, the person behind us was okay with it, three houses down from us, there's a family that has seven kids, they foster kids, they're okay with it. I feel like if there was gonna be an issue with safety, I feel like people with families and kids would obviously understand, as, as they said, there's lots of kids in the fam, in the community, not on our street, there's only a handful of homes that have them, most everyone is, is older. Um, and so that's kinda my response back, and I, um, and, and to Cheryl's point as well, if she wants us to get another property manager that she feels is more understanding or like has higher reviews, I will do that. I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing that, to make people feel comfortable.
Yes, ma'am chair.
Go ahead.
Um, took an oath to tell the truth, so I'm gonna give you a chance to address, did you see some assists on the date that you said?
Yes, and I, I also submitted everything over to the city, so they can see it. There's no one at my home that has not been welcomed to my home, no one from online advertisements.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Oh. No? Okay, thank you.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes.
Um, can, will Cheryl come back up?
Just now on the morning.
You're fine.
This is a stretch.
Okay, we heard from, we heard from him that he said he ceased and assisted. You say he's still having people over.
Ma'am, can you put the microphone down?
Can you move the microphone down a little bit?
Yeah. Um, he never stopped renting the home. I watched it very closely every weekend. I knew the exact date that the city asked him to stop, he never stopped, except for one weekend, there wasn't someone there. I have the dates at home, I didn't bring them. He rented, he continued to rent every single weekend, Friday, Saturday, with them leaving on Sunday, even after the city said, stop renting because you're not licensed. Yes. So, that's what I say, I was surprised, we're under oath, to hear that there were no renters, because I'm sure that Jeff can attest, other people can attest that can see the house, that he continued to rent after he was told to stop.
Okay, I just wanna verify that's what you said again.
Thank you. And I just wanna say one more thing about the management thing. I'm not saying that isn't a management company, because I don't know. I'm saying that all I could find is, it's listed as a cleaning company, and he's listed as a, that he's managed a cleaning company for three years, that he is a handyman, and then I couldn't find a specific address, like for a management company. I saw phone numbers in Lee Summit, I saw four, multiple phone numbers in Johnson County, I never saw the phone number that was listed on the license. But I'm just saying, I don't know, I'm not saying that it isn't a management company.
Okay, my question's gonna be, what is the name that you're looking
Okay, my question's going to be, what is the name that you're looking at?
The one that's on the license, the one that says blah, 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 cleaning slash management.
So you're saying the KC, I mean, the, or is that?
Yeah, I, I'm just saying.
KC Cleaning Management Service?
I'm just saying that I saw it, I don't know, but I saw it as listed as a cleaning, he's overseen, or ran a cleaning business for three years. He has no complaints with Better Business Bureau, but he isn't accredited with them. And then I also saw that he has a website for being a handyman, but I could not find anywhere where it was a specific property management company. And that's not my job. My main job is to tell you that for seven months, he's been in Utah, and we've been terrorized.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm not done yet. Jake, come back up, please. What's the name of the management company you're using?
J2KC Cleaning Services, Cleaning and Management Services.
Have you seen their license for property management?
I've not seen their license for property management. They're found through Thumbtack.
Okay, so you don't know if they are property management firm or not?
That, that is correct. With, with that stated.
No, no, that's just simple.
No, 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 I was, I was going to say, with that stated, I'm more than happy to get someone that they feel credited with.
Well, no, I'm not worried about that. I'm not worried about that. I'm just saying, you didn't do your due diligence to make sure it was a good property management firm, what it sounds like.
Well, the reason, and just to respond, not to get argumentative, but when I spoke to the person at the city, they said it was a responsible agent, it could even be a neighbor. So when I heard that, I take that as it can, it doesn't have to be actual, you know, verified, so that's, yeah.
Okay, that, that's just my question there. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, I'm closing the public portion of this. Commissioner's discussion, questions of, further questions of staff?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
My comments are predictable. Neighbors have the right to the quiet enjoyment of their home, their neighborhood. This applicant had an opportunity to make a first impression. Although he was operating illegally, we've heard countless people come before this commission and cite that they looked online, they called the city, they did this, and they did that. The trust factor here is broken. These residents have the right to enjoy their neighborhood, their homes, without fear and without concern about who's coming and who's going. If this applicant want to come back before this commission at a later date, and he's established himself with these people, and they take no exception, I'd be joyfully. I think he is absolutely one of the most brilliant young people I've ever seen. But as far as this application, hell would freeze over before I vote for it.
That's very specific.
I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm all for admitting you've made mistakes. And I love second chances. And I agree with Mr. Ross. It's hard to take a side, but I think we all know what, where we sat tonight. So I, what are the choices? Can we have somebody withdraw an application? Heal this community and come back after we've already heard it all? Or do we deny it and send, basically send?
You'd have to make a motion to table it.
I mean, we can deny it, and they can come back.
Six months, right?
Another time, I mean.
Right.
Because they have to renew it every year anyway.
I have to check into that. I know that rezonings have a certain cooling-off period. I'm not sure about these.
Okay.
I have to get back to you on that.
So I guess my, my sentiment is very close to, I think Jeff, who spoke, you know, right now, it's a no-go because it's contentious and there's no trust. And yet I want a beautiful family moving to Independence. I, they're right, they're in the best neighborhood. But Mr. Preston is also right in that your first impression blew it. So I think the only thing to help would be time. So my recommendation to you would be to, to not pursue this, heal, show them who you really are, and come back.
Any other comments? All right, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve case 23-400-05, short-term rental, 509 East Rankin Road, with the recommendations from the city.
Thank you. Is there a second? And we're ready for a vote.
Yep.
Ready, ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
No.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
No.
Commissioner Preston?
No.
Chair McLean?
No. Case number 23-400-05, short-term rental at 509 East Rankin Road, has been denied. Thank you, everyone who came to speak for and against. I think all the voices are very important on all the cases tonight. So thank you for coming and staying so late. Okay, next meeting is April 25th, 2023, and I think it'll be a lot again. Stuart?
I think there's like four cases.
Are they all short-term rental?
No.
Oh.
There's one home business that's not a short-term rental, it's a hair salon, one sure hair salon, but in a city-initiated rezoning, and there's a couple of other rezoning things.
I know. Well, I was going to give kudos to, mine's mine. I'm telling them giving kudos out loud. I haven't adjourned, I haven't like gavelled out, like I haven't gavelled out yet. But I mean, I think, like, I love the questions because I think that you guys are doing a phenomenal job, and I thought that was really good that they.
Kudos to Stan.
You're clearly doing yeoman's work, so I appreciate that. I know they're loud now, everybody can't hear that, but. Yes, and thank you, Mr. Scarborough, for your expertise on the sound machine. I feel very educated. We might have to like have a, like an expert.
A consultant.
A consultant for these short-term rentals.
He's a friend of the court.
Okay, before we lose total control, anything else for the greater good that we need to? No? Okay. This meeting is adjourned at 9:20, April 25th.